Hey Steve.
Hey Karen.
Hello?
Hi, Bruce. I don't know if I'm right or not, but I think it's, uh, it's almost 6:30.
It is 6:30 actually.
So I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of October 11th, 2021. This meeting is held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions at malibu city.org/virtualmeetings. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand either electronically, which is better for me, or by waving, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. Kelsey, may I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, I'd like to lead us into a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Kelsey, will you take the role? Please?
Mayor Grisanti, I can't, but you do have the hand raised.
I have a hand raised. Hi Bruce.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm swell. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't see it.
No problem. Thank you, Kelsey. So, um, I asked earlier today and have not gotten an answer yet whether there is a time sensitivity to hearing items 4B, 4C, and 4D. Because if there's not, I don't think it's appropriate to hear them tonight, given that we got 700 pages of staff material on Thursday evening with respect to those three items. Uh, I'll note that the appeals that gave rise to those items were filed in June, May and June. And it took till not, not even two weeks ago, but this past Thursday before we got any material for them. And I've spent a lot of time over the weekend trying to get my arms around them. I've, I've, as I've been asked to do many times, conferred with the staff, conferred with the council, but there are still many unanswered questions. So, um, unless they have to be heard tonight, I, I, I wonder why they're on the agenda to be heard on such short notice. I thought, so I'm moving if they, unless the staff explains that they have to be heard tonight for some shot clock reason, um, I'm asking that they be deferred to a different hearing.
All right. Would the, is the staff available to weigh in on the shot clock question? Hi, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm looking to see if our attorneys have logged on yet to apologize as I go through the room here.
I don't know that Gail is on yet. She is typically the attorney from our office who handles wireless facility issues. My understanding is that the shot clock issues were important to the hearing of these appeals tonight. I will confirm that. Um, I know there's a motion pending, but if, and if they are not, I will interject and let you guys know and you can revisit your decision on the approval of the final agenda.
All right. So perhaps I can make the motion before we proceed with them. I mean, I, if there's a shot clock, I'm, I'm not looking to prejudice the city in any way, but if we're not under a time pressure, uh, it seems to me that we shouldn't have to decide these things, um, in such a hurry.
Is there a second?
I would ask quickly for a second, um, what our upcoming schedules look like as well. Because obviously that would lead to something else being pushed, so just want to see was
Steve, what does our question, our, our schedule look like for two weeks from tonight?
We're not too badly loaded up on the 25th. We might need to continue a couple of items from that agenda, but, um, we could accommodate it if that's council's desire.
Okay. I personally would prefer that we, uh, they are at the end of our, I, I think the only thing I would want to put ahead is I think that there's a six or seven A.
Five A.
Five A. You're right.
Very brief.
Mayor Grisanti, members of the council, if I could just add, I don't know if the applicants or Verizon's attorneys on, you can certainly ask uh, them to toll the shot clock to a date certain or to a future time such that we can hear these on a night where the council might have more time to prepare.
Do we have anyone from Verizon on this call?
We have at least one of their representatives. Let me see if we can get them unmuted.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Daisy Weinkopf on behalf of Verizon.
Hi Daisy.
Hello.
How can, can you educate us as to the shot clock requirements on these three items?
Uh, all three items are already passed the shot clock. Um, Verizon has been patient. We have not really pushed the issue. Um, we would prefer to hear the item tonight, but of course we're here at council's behest. So, um, you know, that, that would be our preference if possible.
Okay.
I think the specific question, Ms. Kim Pang, is whether or not Verizon would be willing to toll the statute further to the extent it's been told already to a date certain in the very near future, so the council can have additional time to review your application materials, staff materials, and appellate materials. Is that something that you're willing to agree to?
Ideally, no, but because of our team wanting to be collaborative with council, we will agree only to one delay to perhaps next council meeting.
Okay.
John, thank you for that clarification and Izzy, thank you for that accommodation.
So it sounds as though, I'm sorry, Mayor Grisanti, it sounds as though Ms. Kim Pang is willing to allow these matters to be continued to your next city council meeting. I don't know what that agenda looks like. Mr. McCleary would have to weigh in on that. Um, I don't want to certainly put you in a worse situation than you might be in tonight, but it's something to consider whether or not there's room on that agenda to consider or to a date before that agenda where you can consider these three appeals. It's council's, council's pleasure.
Ken, Bruce, would you be willing to wait until we've dealt with foray to decide whether or not, uh, you want to push this?
I'm happy to have it decided later, but this isn't an issue of not having enough time tonight. This is an issue of not having had enough time coming into tonight. But if that's your preference, sure, I'm, I'm happy to have it decided later.
And, and I'm not, I'm not, only reason I'm not going to make a second is I have a lot of experience doing these, so it wasn't hard for me to get to the meat of the issue personally, so I feel a little biased there. Um, but you know, I'll defer to the council.
Yeah, Paul, there may not even be a second, so you might forget whether there is, because if there's no appetite to delay, might as well not delay.
I'll give you, I'll give you a second.
Okay.
All right. So we can vote later. That's fine.
I'm, well, you have a second now. You're entitled to a vote if you want it.
No, you, you asked for an accommodation to vote later. I'm happy to do that.
Okay. All right. So let's see how, how things go. Uh, so now may I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
We need to vote on the agenda now.
Mayor Grisanti, we do need a motion, uh, to approve the agenda to move forward. Do you want me to call the
You had a first and a second, so please call a roll on that. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Council, uh, sorry, Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelsey. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 1st, 2021, with the amended agenda posted on October 6th, 2021.
Wonderful. We have a ceremonial presentation, item number 1A, the Blue City Certification Presentation. I understand the council member Fair, Fair is going to help us with that?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, okay, uh, this is actually, I think, a very proud moment for the city. Our community has always supported the protection and preservation of the ocean. I'm excited to share some excellent news. The Blue City Network is honoring Malibu as a certified blue city. Could we please display the certificate of honor on the screen? Alex, is that possible? If not, I'll continue. A program of the nonprofit organization Project O, the Blue City Network, is a certification system that recognizes cities and counties that demonstrate a commitment to healthy oceans and waterways. As part of the network, our city will continue to collaborate with other cities and counties and receive support from a network of nonprofit partners to help Malibu further develop programs that protect the marine environment. Thank you to environmental sustainability analyst Christine Shen for coordinating Malibu's assessment. Here to present the honor is Evelina Marquetti, Executive Director of Project O. Do you have Evelina?
Yes, and there's the certificate. Thank you, Councilmember Fair, Mayor Grisanti, and distinguished members of the city council. I am proud to be here tonight to congratulate Malibu as our newest certified blue city. Our team is very pleased to welcome beautiful Malibu, known for its 27 miles of scenic coastline and sandy beach, sandy beaches into the Blue City Network. We recognize the city as a committed community dedicated to protecting the ocean and waterways. Malibu impressively scored 360 out of 500 points on the certification assessment, placing you in the ocean champion tier. The certification process involves completing a detailed assessment form that evaluates the city's current environmental issue initiatives and programs. The assessment covers four solution areas, waste minimization, climate protection, and community resilience, water quality and efficiency, and healthy ecosystems. Blue City Certification allows communities to credibly and transparently track its progress towards overall sustainability objectives. Some of the major accomplishments that assisted Malibu in gaining this recognition include being one of the first cities to, in the United States, to adopt a ban on plastic straws and other single-use items amongst the most stringent in our count, in our country. Uh, enacting a climate emergency declaration, joining a dedicated group of more than 1,000 cities worldwide to do so. The declaration called for a request for regional collaboration on an immediate just transition and emergency mobilization effort to restore a safe climate. Setting a requirement for wildlife-friendly fencing on properties within or adjacent to environment environmentally sensitive habitat areas, E S H A. The fencing is designed to allow wildlife to safely trespass through a property so they are not restricted from entering other habitats. Malibu also implemented Keep It Clean Malibu, an award-winning outreach campaign designed to encourage residents in preventing pollution to the ocean and waterways. Successfully executing the Malibu Smart Program, which helps local residents save water and money through a comprehensive water conservation program. The goal is to save 28 million gallons of water annually in Malibu and Topanga Canyon through the installation of water efficiency measures. The program offered turf removal and gray water and rainwater reuse classes, as well as a rain barrel giveaway event. As part of the Blue City Network, Malibu will continue to receive support from us and our nonprofit partners to further elevate the health of the ocean and the city's residents. The city joins a commit, community of other certified blue cities in California, including Manhattan Beach, Santa Monica, Solana Beach, Imperial Beach, and others. The True, it, Truth and Hermosa Beach, sorry, had to give them a shout out. Through this program, Malibu will serve as a model to other cities looking to advance their in my, environmental initiatives. As I wrap up, I'd like to give a special mention to Yolanda Bundy and Christine Shen, who served as contact persons for the program and worked diligently to get this, your city certified. On behalf of myself and the team at Project O, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Evelina.
I'm happy.
And amazingly enough, that leads nicely into item 1B, which is an environmental programs update from Environmental Sustainability Director Bundy. Hello, Yolanda.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. This evening, we have a brief environmental program update. I will pass it down to our environmental sustainability analyst, Christine Shen, for the presentation. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. My Zoom crashed for a moment. Good evening, Mayor Grisanti and council members. My name is Christine Shen. Uh, next slide, please. The purpose of this presentation is to review the progress of the environmental programs for the following six focused areas. Energy, water conservation, pollution prevention, waste reduction, coastal, and events and outreach. Next slide, please. The first focus area is energy. Next slide. To provide history of council's direction for that item, for an item, some of the slides will have council action and a date at the bottom right corner. With that, we'll begin with the Clean Power Lines. In 2017, Malibu joined CPA along with over 30 cities from LA and Ventura counties. CPA offers competitive rates for electricity with higher renewable content. Next slide. Since joining, council approved the selection of 100% renewable electricity as a default for Malibu CPA customers. Committing to 100% renewable energy is deemed the most impactful climate action cities have taken in Southern California. Next slide. The city is also part of the Southern California Regional Energy Network, or SOCalRen. SOCalRen helps public agencies save money and electricity through technical expertise at no cost. One service they provide is the comparative energy analysis, which reviews all the city's electricity accounts to see our cumulative energy usage and costs over the past year. This often results in energy efficiency recommendations. Next slide. The last time SOCalRen conducted the CEA for us in 2018, the city moved forward with two low-cost projects to save significant electricity costs. One of this was the HVAC optimization at City Hall. After the CEA, SOCalRen conducted a more in-depth energy audit of City Hall and brought to our attention that the HVACs system was always on unless someone manually turned it off. So we worked with the Assistant City Manager, Maintenance, and Media Staff to reprogram the HVAC system to start and stop at certain times so that it would only be running when the building is occupied. There was no cost associated with this upgrade besides staff time. In comparing the bill, electricity bill the year before and after the reprogramming took place, City Hall saved 30% in electricity costs, which comes out to $20,000 annually, which the building continues to save year after year. Next slide. The second project was at the Michael Landen Center. We worked with SCE and Community Services to upgrade over 32 indoor lighting fixtures to LED. With the SCE incentives and rebates, the cost of the lighting upgrade only came out to $960. Comparing the electricity bill the year before and after the LED lighting upgrade, the Michael Landen Center saved 45% in electricity costs, or $981 annually. So the city more than recouped the cost of the electricity upgrade, lighting upgrade with electricity savings in the first year. We recently completed our second energy audit of City Hall and continue to work with SOCalRen on energy efficiency. Next slide. Our next focus area is water. Next slide, please. Since 2018, the city partnered with West Basin and LA County Water Works District 29 on a grant-funded project called Malibu Smart. The goal of the program is to save 28 million gallons of water per year through incentives for water-efficient technology. The program also brought the following events to the city, which I'll be highlighting a few in the next slides. Next slide. Here are the incentives currently offered through Malibu Smart. Thanks to the generosity of our partners, West Basin and LA County Water Works District 29, Malibu was able to secure the highest lawn replacement rebate in the state at $5 per square foot, while most cities are receiving $3 per square foot. Next slide. After the Woolsey Fire, the Malibu Smart Partners tailored our events so that our rebuilt families and community had landscaping resources for living in high fire hazard areas. Our first workshops were in September and November 2019. And due to the popularity of those workshops, we brought a virtual fire escaping webinar on September 15th this year, where Mayor Grisanti welcomed attendees and Fire Safety Liaison Chris Brosard was on the panel answering residents' questions throughout the webinar. Next slide. In November 2019, the city partnered with the Malibu Boys and Girls Club and West Basin to give away over 150 rain barrels to Malibu residents. Next slide. In 2019, we worked with the City of Santa Monica and School District to bring water conservation assemblies to Malibu's 5th grade students. This spring, the city and West Basin staff gave virtual water conservation presentations to the 4th and 5th graders at the Sycamore School. Next slide. The next focus area is pollution prevention, which includes a large number of our work plan and regulatory items. Next slide. To address the rodent population and decrease the use of rodenticides in Malibu, council directed staff to require locking lids on commercial solid waste bins at all times and conduct quarterly inspections for the first year of de-locking lid implementation. Next slide. After the ordinance was adopted, ESD mailed and emailed all impacted businesses and property owners, notifying them of the requirements with instructions to contact their hauler to set up locking lid service. We also placed newspaper ads and social media posts. In the first year of implementation, ESD conducted 168 inspections, which resulted in 24 businesses receiving notices. Eventually, nine businesses were sent to code enforcement for not having locking lid service and we're at the point we have 100% compliance for locking lid service at Malibu's shopping centers and restaurants. Next slide. After the city received complaints about overflowing dumpsters following busy summer weekends at three shopping centers, I coordinated with the haulers on behalf of each property to arrange for two Saturday pickups one weekend as a short-term solution to prevent overflow. Following that weekend, I met with property managers on site to review best practices and provide signage and guidance. And for a long-term solution, ESD received planning approval to add bins outside the dumpster enclosures to increase the capacity, which the three shopping centers have now done. Next slide. This is an ongoing compliance program, and as the photos show, conditions change daily, hourly, and seasonally. Getting to compliance involves behavioral changes from shopping center management, high turnover staff, and customers. We continue to monitor these areas and work with community members like Poison Free Malibu to investigate complaints. Next slide. Salt-based water softeners can impact the ability of wastewater treatment plants. As a result, council adopted an ordinance to ban these systems that are connected to the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. We worked with all 23 Civic Center area restaurants to reach 100% compliance by sending letters and guidelines visiting each restaurant and following up via phone, email, and in person. Next slide. ESD oversees the city's compliance with numerous governmental agencies, each having their own reporting and permitting requirements, including the LA Regional and State Water Quality Control Boards, LA County, and State. Depending on the agency requirements, reports are submitted monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, and annually. Next slide. Despite COVID, our environmental programs coordinator, Mark Johnson, was able to complete 329 construction site inspections and 30 illicit discharge inspections last fiscal year to ensure practices are followed to prevent pollution. And during our recent restaurant inspections, we learned that there is a shortage of individually wrapped wooden cutlery, preventing most restaurants from complying with the city's plastic ban. We will monitor the situation and enforce the city's plastic ban once compliant products can be delivered to, to our local restaurants. Next slide. Our environmental programs coordinator also oversees the Coordinated Integrated Monitoring Program. This shows our monitoring locations, which are monitored annually, monthly, or weekly by our consultant. And 13 of these sites are monitored actually three or more times per week. The samples are reviewed and any abnormal results are investigated. Next slide. Staff also serves on the Steering Committee for the Safe Clean Water Program, which provides dedicated funding to increase our local water supply, improve water quality, and protect public health. Next slide. Our next focus area is waste reduction. Next slide. One of the more staff-intensive programs will be complying with SB 1383, the state's most ambitious waste reduction law in the last 30 years. To meet SB 1383, staff prepared an ordinance requiring organic waste recycling and edible food recovery, which council adopted back in August. And we're currently rolling out organic service to commercial businesses, working with partners to explore edible food recovery options, updating the city's procurement policy, and developing education and outreach materials to help the community learn about the requirements of SB 1383. In 2022, the city will need to start monitoring for compliance. And in 2024, the state is requiring the city to take enforcement actions. Next slide. Our next focus area are coastal projects. Next slide. In 2017, the Bay Foundation began coordinating with the city and LA County beaches and harbors on a living shoreline project in Malibu. The project restores approximately three acres of dune at Zuma and Point Dune beaches to increase the resiliency of the shoreline. Next slide. The restoration work began in 2020 and includes a removal of non-native plant species such as ice plant, followed by the planting of native dune species that will naturally trap and build, trap sand and build dunes over time. In August this year, the LA Times featured a four-page article on the Malibu Living Shoreline Project. Next slide. And our final focus area is outreach and events. Next slide. To continue serving the community during COVID, ESD hosted its popular recycling events with COVID safety precautions in place. So despite the pandemic, we were able to collect over 24 tons of waste through our events from 2020 to now. And we have three more events planned for the rest of the year. Next slide. In April, council directed staff to apply for the Blue City Network, Network, which we just heard from, and we are excited to be a part of. Next slide. Environmental program staff is now working with an advertising class in Pepperdine on a campaign to promote environmental programs and sustainable actions. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you.
Fantastic as always, everybody. Thank you.
Now, the next question, is there a higher tier on the Blue Cities scale for us to aspire to?
There is.
Oh. Well, I'm sure we will hear about a project to get there.
Yes, we certainly were worth towards getting at the higher level.
Okay, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right? And that brings us to item 1C, which will be Deputy City Attorney Wood presenting an update on the school separation. Hi, Christine.
Good evening, Council, and thank you, um, for the opportunity to come before you again. I feel like we're gonna be doing this for a while, so I appreciate the, the patience and, um, and the interest. I'm gonna give you a bit of an update on the, um, school separation project. Um, if you could, for next slide, please. Um, so specifically, as we talked about at the last council meeting, the county committee has tentatively approved the petition to move into the regular process. And the education code provides that once that approval, um, happens, within 60 days after that approval, um, the county committee must hold a hearing. Um, and the statute says in each of the districts affected by the petition. Um, because these, um, hearings are being held virtually, how, how that part of the statute will be fulfilled is a little unclear to us, but right now, Lakewood County Committee has, um, noticed, provided us notice of the next virtual public hearing on Wednesday, November 10th, um, at 6:00 PM. Normally, it's really important to understand this. Normally, this would be the beginning of the petition review process. So it's really unclear to us right now what's gonna happen at this public hearing that's different than what's happened at the other public hearings. We've asked that question a couple of times in a couple of different ways. We're doing a lot to prepare, as I'll talk to you in a moment, but right now, the scope of this public hearing very likely could be very similar to the scope of the last public hearings because it, it was just, um, it, it was incredibly unusual and, uh, whether it was accurate or not, it was unusual to have such in-depth preliminary public hearings. And so we had pretty in-depth preliminary public hearings. And now when it's time to have public hearings where you're really looking at the merits and you're really looking at the criteria, we've already kind of done that, so we're looking to the county committee for a little bit more guidance, but, I mean, I think we'll get some closer to November 10th. But, um, right now, it, it's a little unclear what the scope of this particular public hearing is. Mayor?
Are they thinking of having a hearing that's only accessible to Malibu and another one that's only accessible to Santa Monica? Are they gonna, we're gonna be together again?
You know, I, the same question we've asked, um, when in normal circumstances, when they've had these hearings in public, and I won't say that it happened in LA County, but in other parts of the state when they've had these meetings, um, normally what they do is they do have an in-person meeting in the area that's most affected, so in, in Santa Monica. And then they would have another hearing in Malibu, so that they're actually bringing the hearing to the community. Um, you know, we were given an example today by one of our consultants where there was a, um, there were six districts that were unifying into one. And in that instance, they had six different preliminary, or six different public hearings in each of those feeder districts. Um, I don't know if that's what the county committee intends to do in a virtual space, and those are the questions we're asking.
Thank you. Apologize for the interruption.
No worries. It's a, it's a very valid question. Um. Okay, next slide. In addition to the public hearing, obviously, we're working on our full feasibility study. Um, there are, obviously, there are nine criteria, but there are a couple of criteria that we are working on, um, because we feel like there's more, um, more emphasis that needs to be put on them. We thought that originally for some, um, but there's one, this first criteria that we realized we're gonna spend a little bit more time on than we had originally thought. The first criteria is the one that deals with community identity. Um, there was, I don't know if you remember from the, either the public hearing or from the staff report from the Lake County Committee staff, there was a lot of, there was a lot of assumptions in the Lake County Committee staff report about the two communities being very similar. Um, in fact, there was statements that the communities were actually the same. And they were, um, they were basing that on the idea that they had been in the same school district for so long. Um, we thought this was a pretty obvious criteria that these were two very different um, communities because they have, you know, they have different emergency services, they have different athletic leagues, they have different youth sports leagues. That, you know, there's just, there's different development and retail interest and, um, so we just thought we had made the case in our proposal, this was a very, two very different communities. Um, but since that was raised as a real issue, and this is a, this is a really important criteria, um, we're looking at, um, the possibility of hiring a research company to complete some community identity surveys in both cities. Um, and we will continue to research that and, and assess the cost of that and then get back to the council about that. For criteria number three, um, we have to do an assessment of what schools' facilities need to be improved upon um, as part of the feasibility study. So we are now seeking permission from the district to tour, uh, Malibu schools, maybe some Santa Monica schools as well, so we can do an inventory of those schools, their facilities, and their assets. And criteria five, we're finalizing our financial analysis. We're, um, updating our analysis with current enrollment and budget figures. It was something we refused to do during the preliminary phases, um, because we could have updated every six months practically between enrollment and, um, and budget numbers, and we just didn't want to waste resources doing that. But now that we're getting ready to provide our full feasibility study, we will update our financial analysis with current numbers. We're also concerned about some of the things that were, um, some financial assumptions that we saw in the school services report, and we want to understand those better, so we have a list of questions that we're formally submitting to the Lake County Committee to see if we can get some answers from school services about some of those financial assumptions, because maybe there's some things our financial analysis, um, analysts need to consider, so we're, we're, we're trying to, um, have some dialogue with school services about that. And then finally, this criteria six, I think, is one of the most interesting criteria for you guys to, to note. We're gonna have to complete our academic program. And, um, we are now embarking on something called a visioning process that will really feed the academic program, the sound academic program, because remember, the whole goal here is to obtain local control over the schools, so that the schools reflect the values and the priorities of Malibu. So our visioning process will stop and ask the community, what do you value? What do you want in an academic program? And then how will that, um, be reflected in the new Malibu Unified School District? So this visioning process, um, next slide. You should see me over here hitting my arrow, trying to go to the next slide. It's hysterical. Um, so uh, this next slide shows you, um, just briefly what the visioning process looks like. We're going to, um, launch a citywide survey where we will probe what this, the community values. Um, after that survey, we will discover through some virtual discussions with affinity groups what we actually want, what are our priorities as a community? And then how are those priorities and values reflected in the new unified school district's curriculum? We will define that with a group of stakeholders that are already involved in Malibu schools, whether it be in the PTAs, the school leadership coun, for, um, council, um, the amps, um, so we'll bring together some stakeholders, um, to have that dialogue, and then, um, the consultant. And then the consultants who are working with us on this will then synthesize all of those things into a report and share that publicly with the council. And then that will drive the academic program that we will provide in the feasibility study to the County Committee. So we just wanted to give, the ad hoc committee just wanted to give you an update on all the steps that we're taking to finalize the feasibility study and still engage in the Lakewood process while we finish up the feasibility study now that we've been given this preliminary approval. And that's all I have to present. I'll take questions if there are any.
I can only see five people. Steve, I see your hand. You're muted.
Thank you for that presentation. A question, you know, for the, the meeting on November tenth, will the nine issues we've got to get resolved be resolved by then, or does that come later?
No, so though, so remember, if there had not been those preliminary public hearings, this would be the first chance for the community to even hear the concerns of Malibu residents, the first time they would hear about what we wanted. So this preliminary hearings, it's unclear what's supposed to happen at these hearings. But the final decision and the final review of the nine criteria in our full feasibility study, we anticipate will take place months later.
That's, that's a hundred and twenty day timeframe.
Yes, that is.
Let me ask one other question. At the last meeting we had, Santa Monica made an overture that they wanted to renegotiate. And we, let's go back to them and ask them what they want to renegotiate and give us an idea they're willing to change something. Have we heard anything from them?
We have not heard a response to that. The communication we sent them.
Okay, thank you. That's it, I got.
Thank you, Steve. I'd just like to take a moment to thank you for, for keeping us up to date and, and the information. Because no matter what are I think, what, if I think I understand it, what it comes out to be always is more complicated. So thank you very much. You know, so informed.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Thank you, Christine. All right. That takes us to item number two A. Communication from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which the City Council has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, you have two speakers, Mayor Grisanti. They are Nicole McGinley and Kian Schulman. We'll hear from Nicole first.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Nicole.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Last week I heard that nobody could really hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. Okay, so my question tonight is not directly related to the appeals, but rather a general request. I'm hoping that we can please get the update to ordinance four seventy-seven to match four eighty-three. At Tuesday's meeting, there was a discussion about what ordinance is being applied depending on when an application is deemed to complete. The appeal you considered on October fifth wasn't a gap between old conditions and new ones in the non-public right-of-way. And we didn't get the benefit of all of the important safety standards, excuse me, that are woven into the application process, not the building phase. Last I checked, there were forty-eight applications in the queue. Twenty-three of them are marked with four seventy-seven. Ten of those came in after the passage of four seventy-seven. As we anticipated and warned, telecom will not stop bombarding our city with all of these applications. We need to update the public right-of-way ordinance to match the non-public right-of-way ordinance where appropriate. Residents should have the assurance that the higher level of safety standards possible will apply to every possible application. If we don't update the public right-of-way ordinance soon, this gap will continue to widen between ensuring our city has adequate infrastructure and mitigating fire hazards. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I'm in the middle of an AYSO board meeting. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Our next speaker is Kian Schulman.
Hi, Kian. Is Kian, Kian, are you available?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Grisanti. Do we have a slideshow, please? Good evening, Mayor Grisanti, City Council members and staff. I'm Kian Schulman of Poison Free Malibu. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for all of your support through the years to keep Malibu citizens, pets, wildlife and the environment safe from toxic pesticides. We are all environmental heroes. I'm here to talk about a related toxic issue, the lidlock ordinance that was approved on June two thousand and nineteen. Many law-abiding businesses observed the ordinance and have placed locks on their dumpsters, preventing rodent access, overstepping, unauthorized access, and promoting a trash-free, free, healthy environment. The Environmental Department, Yolanda Bunge and Christine Chen are doing a wonderful job sending multiple letters to businesses describing the new ordinance and its timely matter. However, some shopping malls have done nothing at all. These businesses are causing health issues with exposed trash, some of which reaches the creeks and the ocean. There's a wonderful article in the Malibu Times this week titled Concerned Citizens Work to Help Keep Santa Monica Bay Clean. Here's a quote from Dr. Nye from the Los Angeles Water Control Board. Pollution is a huge problem. Trash is a constant battle. A new regulation focuses on landowners, including in Malibu, and their obligation to reduce trash that's getting into Malibu Creek. We're working with the National Park Service, California Parks, and landowners. More oversight is desperately needed for enforcement. Presently, there are only inspections four times a year. This is not enough. Can enforcement be increased to at least once a month until the trash is under control? A rigorous application of fines can help pay for the extra workload for the inspectors. The very wealthy property owners should not be allowed to cause health issues, trash our streams, watershed, and ocean. Thank you for your immediate concern in resolving this issue.
Thank you, Kian. Okay, that takes us to item two B, and I'm wondering if Lieutenant Jim Braden is available.
Can you hear me, Paul?
I, we can hear you, Jim.
Okay, yeah, so I'm available.
Can you give us a little bit of an update on how you think things are going and what's been going on?
Yeah, sure. The, I briefed the Public Safety Council the other night on the beach activity for the summer, which citations for alcohol was similar to the years before. It's right around two thousand. We did, we were right back up to our normal tow operations, basically, with the Sierra tow staging tow trucks. So there was about four hundred fourteen toes, which for the last several years, we've not been able to do that. But the, the four hundred was consistent with when we had a regular tow company in Malibu. The the rest of the citations were similar. There was more arrest for drunken public on the beach during the summer than in other summers. So we had to deal with that, and there was more force used than in other summers. So on that end of it, I also prepared and sent to the city manager an update on what the early morning car that you guys approved in July had done. So the statistics for that car for working for the last, it's almost three months. The, there are about forty-five arrests, which is posted, I believe, on the city website if anybody wants to look at it. So there are forty-five arrests. It tells about the different arrests and the types of arrests. And there's a variety of things, anywhere from narcotics, guns, warrants, to felony Nobel warrants. So there's an assortment of arrests. Also, within that, there's also citations involving the motorhomes along PCH, along with traffic citations, the trying to mitigate some of the traffic issues along with different motorhome violations and time violations in the nighttime. The, other than those things, we still have, the host team is coming out on a regular basis. And they're working in unison with some other teams that I have also, which is a sit team at a Malibu lost hill station with a sergeant. So they're continuing on that. I've seen a few emails that, for some reason, that there's thought that there's no homeless people allowed in Malibu anymore. And the, I still have constraints. So you have to be patient in, I appreciate any intel anybody can give me where different people are and stuff, it assists us in doing our job. Other than those things, there was a few motorhomes trying to homestead the parking lot at Zuma Beach. So we're on that at nighttime, making sure they're not living in the parking lot. And there was another gentleman at Surf Rider Beach that they're trying to get help through the Veterans Administration. He's not at Surf Rider Beach anymore. So the, but they are in contact with him and also the Veterans Administration, trying to get him help. So, and I'm open to any questions anybody might have.
Jim, I know it's a difficult job, and I appreciate the fact that you've been, your guys are out there and you're out there every day trying to make Malibu a little better. So really appreciate that.
When, and I will share that, like, at the beginning of last week, when I drove through Malibu, it, it, it's pleasantly that the efforts are, are showing visually to me. Yeah, I know what I'm looking at. I look, I drive through Malibu on a regular basis, and I do it for the reason that, that the enforcement that I vision for the city is being carried out. So there's not perfectness to it, and things change. So I'm open to criticism. I'm open to people sharing what they see also. But the units I have assigned, I tried to keep them in the direction that mitigate a lot of the quality of life issues in Malibu. And so we'll continue to work on that. And I, I also, I'll share that myself, the city manager, the city attorney, John Cotty, and Karen Perar have been having a few meetings on possibly making a little more restrictive oversized vehicle ordinance for Malibu. So we're working on that. So that's about it for now. The, but we'll continue to work on that. And we're trying to look into what other cities do and how they, how they try to keep people from living in their cities in motorhomes and things, so.
Thank you, Jim. Really appreciate your taking the time.
So not a problem.
Do we have any commission or committee updates?
No, Mayor Grisanti, you don't have any commissioners signed up tonight.
Steve McClary, do you have a city manager update for us?
I do. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. A couple of things I attended in the past week. Sunday, I virtually attended the Dolphin Awards presentation. Just wanted to recognize all the recipients and thank them for all their contributions to the community. It was a nice event. I also dropped by on Thursday to check out the Homeless Connect Day and was very impressed to see the number of individuals involved and the services that were provided. Got to speak with one of the physicians that does outreach to the community. A very impressive group of individuals there, working very hard. Also wanted to announce, and seems very timely, as we get into the first bit of fall weather here with lowering humidities and increasing winds. At one point, as we were going into the weekend, it looked like we might be heading into a public safety power shut-off, a P S P S situation today. Unfortunately, that got called off, but good time for us to announce that there is a P S P S power outage emergency preparedness training that is going to be conducted by the city for seniors and at-risk adults. It's a free virtual training. It will be held on Wednesday, October thirteenth at ten thirty A M. And Thursday, October twenty-first at three P M. A free backup battery is available to participating Malibu residents who complete the training and, and a quiz. You can RSVP online for that. Also wanted to report to council that staff is aware of another option for management of license plate readers. We recently learned that the Sheriff's Department is in the final stages of setting up an agreement with cities that would allow us just to opt in for us to provide the cameras and have the Sheriff's Department do the administration. We're not saying that that's an option that we want to pursue, but we'd like to at least consider that option as it develops and bring that forward to council. So maybe a little bit more time before we can bring that item to, forward to council. In the meantime, of course, we will not be activating those cameras until we have an approved policy. Also wanted to, lost my notes here. First, just want to note to council that, and the public, that first meeting in November, we'll be giving an update on the budget. So we'll be having a look, a kind of a quick look at how we did last fiscal year, and also we'll have some numbers on the first quarter of this fiscal year. So far, things are looking good. We're beating or exceeding our revenue projections, and we're not seeing any concerns on the expenditure end. So that's my mini-budget update. But again, we'll have some detailed numbers at the first meeting in November. And lastly, just wanted to announce that we have a City Hall gallery exhibition that opened October fourth, an Eye to the Future, and it is now currently being on display in Malibu City Hall through November twenty-fourth. That's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Who put the gallery together?
I, I'd have to defer to, let's see, if Mr. Abbot is on, perhaps he could answer that? I don't have.
Kristen is here.
Yes, I am here. And it was, we put out a call to artists, and the Arts Commission actually put it together. So we have an ad hoc that worked on that, and and now it's up, and we're, we're, we have a plan for the rest of the fiscal year to, to continue these art exhibitions at City Hall.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay. I think it's, Mikey. Your hand is raised. Is this a city council?
That was my intent. I didn't actually mean to hit the button. I just got all excited, I guess.
Go for it. You're up. This is your council member meeting attendance reports and inquiries, I would imagine.
Yeah, mainly, besides the last meeting, mainly I've been gone. And I just want to thank everyone at the city, city council, staff, for keeping the city in good hands while I was away for three weeks on a dream vacation. So thank you, everybody. I really sincerely need that. It's been decades since I didn't know what day it was. So thank you for that. Since I've been back, honestly, besides catching up and thinking I had COVID, but I didn't. I went to Homeless Connect Day, and it was fantastic event, as it always is. And hats off to so many agencies for being there, so many NGOs and, and just everybody. It was a well-done. For me, it was interesting. I ended up working one person the entire time. And interestingly, he was from Italy, where I'd just come back from. And somehow was here in America, had no identification, no passport, and needed a lot of help. So, and hats off to so many people, including Pepperdine Law, other agencies for really working hard to help this individual who was and living in a park in Santa Monica for a while now, and was desperate for help to figure it out. So that was great. I, other than that, I really just want to thank the public speakers. Nicole, if you're still on, I just want to say that I reached out to Scott after the last meeting. We had a really good conversation and talked about updating the right-of-way ordinance, I believe is what you're referring to. I don't have all my ordinance numbers memorized at this point as I sit here, but I think that was big on his mind. So we had a great conversation. Kian, thank you so much for everything you do in keeping us up together. Obviously, this is a, been a problem area. Not the ordinance, but enforcement of it. It's tricky. And I don't know the perfect answer, but I I encourage you know, I know we have an overwhelmed code enforcement department and like that, but I encourage us to figure out how to be, you know, more on top of that or I don't know what the answer is, to be honest. I trust staff to help figure that out and Kiana, maybe you have ideas that will help too. And Jim, thank you for your update. We chatted the other day. I really as always, just really, really appreciate our relationship with you and your crew and and Chuck and and your reports are fantastic. And thank you for taking the time to catch up with me and some local issues here in Malibu West too as well. So that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. I see Steve's hand is raised.
Yes, thanks, Paul. I'd like to also like to thank the speakers. I read Nicole's email that sent me to cover the same issue and I met Kian this week when I was walking around Malibu. So I'll come back to that in a second. One of the things I did attend was the safety exhibit they had at City Hall a couple Saturdays ago. And it was a great event. The sheriff was there in force with a bomb squad and a bunch of other stuff. It made it very interesting. So James, thank you very much for that. Young, I think it was Kristen. I what and I'm not sure is I'm walking around, there's some one of the ladies who organized the event. I think it was you, Kristen, came up and said, hi, Steve, and I didn't know who the heck you were. So so I apologize for not responding. So you did a great job. I mean, you were running around all over the place, keeping everything under control, doing a hell of a job. So thank you very much for that. And I won't forget your name again. The sheriff's early car report, James, thank you very much for that. I think it does demonstrate that we're getting our money's worth out of the early car. I mean, we still get a lot of concerns regarding the cars that are parked along PCH. And I'm sure you'll work on that issue, but I I think it demonstrated that we are getting some effort, a good effort from the sheriff's department. So thank you very, very much for that. And to just to confirm a little bit, your comments that said things are getting better. I mean, I walk past Legacy Park almost every day and almost every morning you've got a car sitting out there, the, you know, cleaning, moving the people around the park, keeping it in good shape for the residents who want to go back and and use it. So thank you very much. That effort is having a result. And I've had a lot of people tell me that. Poison-free Malibu. I I run into Keen a couple of times a month when she's out there taking pictures and I'll tell you I understand when we go back. The last, I think it was the last meeting, we talked about increasing the fees for some of the people that you know, when enforcement goes out and they don't listen to us, increasing the fines we're going to give them so we can get their attention. I think that's one, and I think we got to bring this poison-free dumpster ordinance and put it under that same model that says these people are just not listening to us. And then I don't think they don't care because there's no penalties that are impactful if they don't do what they're supposed to do. So I think we really do have to sit down and take a look at what our penalties are, make sure they, you know, mirror what the crime is and get somebody's attention because this has been going on for a very long time. Keon's almost crying when I need her in the morning when she's running around taking pictures of all these dumpsters and all the stuff sitting out there. So I'd like to find some ways, you know, whether it's there's other ways to enforce it. I'm more than happy to listen to that. But I do believe fines are one of the things we're going to have to take a real serious look at. Paul, that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Nobody else? Karen?
Thanks, Paul. Uh, yes, I'd like to also thank the speakers. Thank you, Nicole, for bringing up the right-of-way issues to our attention. And Kian. I too am frustrated and I really thank you for taking the pictures and keeping an eye on things and and then bringing them to our attention because as the saying goes, a picture is worth a thousand words. And I also would like to see if we can increase fines or what we can do to increase enforcement. There's got to be a way to do better. Particularly for those who seem to think the rules don't apply to them. And thank you, Lieutenant Braden, for another thorough report. Yeah, I guess just job security for you and your team. So good news, bad news there. And and particularly, I will say, you know, the the RVs seem to kind of move around. I'm starting to note them individually by name or by sight. And then the the individual that was at Surf Rider Beach for some time and I really want to thank your team who I've been in contact with, Lieutenant Waters and Net Calf. All of you, thanks for your individual attention to people who need a lot of help. So moving on, I'll move through as quickly as I can the things that have been keeping me busy. I attended the COG meeting. I attended the Metro North County Cities Meeting and one of the topics covered was the measures R and M highway projects. And that includes the city's work with Caltrans on PCH signal synchronization. According to that meeting, the start of construction is supposed to be late 2021 or early 2022. So I know that's been a really long time in coming. It'll be nice to see it actually start. As Lieutenant Braden said, we've had a couple of meetings regarding homeless issues and oversized vehicles and hopefully we can continue to thread the needle and get some improvement on both of those things. And I also want to thank everybody who was involved in the Public Safety Expo. Thank you to Susan Duñez and Kristin Riesgo and everybody who put that together. All the agency partners, there were many, the community exhibitors. And I did want to note there is a new edition. I don't know if you can see this. No, you can't. Okay. Well, it's the Emergency Survival Guide and it's got, it now includes the evacuation zones. So you can either contact me or anybody at the city. We'll make sure you can get a copy and they are available at City Hall. As you probably could tell by the work with city attorney Christine Wood, we've been spending a lot of time on school district separation. And I really want to thank Attorney Wood for her insight, her diplomacy, her perseverance. There's a whole lot that she does that she doesn't look for credit for, and I just want to really, really thank her for all her work on that particularly and Elizabeth Shabelson as well. I attended an online demonstration by a company called Pano as in panorama AI. It's a company based in Northern California and they are building a wildfire situational awareness system. It includes mountaintop cameras that rotate 360 degrees every minute. They detect smoke using artificial intelligence and they provide context on incident severity and location. And their goal is to get immediate notification and response so that things can be addressed when they're small. And the great news is there is an installation now on Castro Peak in the Santa Monica Mountains. I attended the JPIA Annual Risk Management Education Forum, incredibly informative. There were sections on a lot of things homelessness, leadership, ethics for public officials and legal guidance for public officials on social media along with other pertinent topics. And I'm sorry, it was a conflict with Homeless Connect Day. I serve as the city's representative. I was asked by Rudy Gonzalez of SoCal Edison to be the government representative to Edison. We had a meeting on Friday and some of those topics included a charge-ready program for transportation electrification and an extensive update on wildfire mitigation and efforts to reduce P S P S, public safety power shut offs. And I didn't know until Friday Rudy is now a regional manager. He is no longer our city's representative, but we haven't had a new representative assigned to us yet. He says that's coming soon. I also attended the Dolphin Awards. I really want to congratulate everybody. We have so many amazing people in the community in education, in so many different areas, community service. Just a lot of great people and they were recognized on Sunday. And then I went to the Malibu Art Association Exhibition at Legacy Park and was pleasantly surprised to see several local artists who told me they had been able to sell some of their work. And then Mikey and I this morning took part in an ongoing discussion on affordable housing, workforce housing for our local workers, possibly seniors and families. And that is in conjunction with Community Corps of Santa Monica. So we're just exploring possibilities and see if we can put two and two together there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. So public comments first. Nicole, you know, so right after we adopted the non-right-of-way ordinance, which is much more robust than and and we're up to date kind of than the right-of-way ordinance. I had actually reached out to Nicole and Scott and suggested that they do what they need to do to propose an update of the right-of-way to coordinate it with the non-right-of-way. So I'm not sure why it's been taking so long. I would like to see that get done much sooner than later because as has been pointed out, we're getting a lot of gap period application. What's going to happen is we're going to keep getting applications under the existing urgency ordinance, which is not as good as the non-urgency ordinance. And then when we finally get around to doing a good right-of-way ordinance, we'll be stuck having to apply retroactive, not not be able to apply it retroactively. We'll be stuck applying the old one. So the sooner the better. I agree with that. The open trash cans, I've gone around and taken similar pictures. I don't understand why we, it's some something as simple as the volunteers on patrol for trash cans or for trash dumpsters. I mean, take a picture, issue a ticket, send the ticket and the picture to the city. Find them. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that a dumpster is not closed. The labor exchange, to their credit, theirs are always locked, closed. They open them up when they need them and they otherwise keep them locked. So they can do it. Whole Foods can do it. The Country Mart can do it. The lumberyard can do it. The gas stations can do it. Everyone can do it. It's not that difficult. I want to congratulate cities attorneys for a victory against telecom this, since the last meeting. So that was good. They did win that matter that they were discussing during our last meeting. So what have I been doing? Mikey and I have been working behind the scenes as an ad hoc committee with the gentleman we've hired to do the city manager recruitment. We have multiple applicants, I think something like 36 applicants. We're working on developing a manner of soliciting resident input prior to the interview process. We're hoping that we can get some robust input from the community, possibly a special city council meeting. So that's that's to be figured out in the next week or two, hopefully at the most. We're hopeful the process will be concluded by Thanksgiving and that we will have a permanent city manager in place sometime in January. Participated in a number, every Monday, we have a, unless it gets rescheduled, Paul and I participate in a Zoom meeting with Steve McClary as well, with CalSTRAT. And I always learn a lot about what's going on legislatively from that. There've been some interesting developments, but they're too complex actually to address during this this time. If anybody wants to know more about it, just give me a shout. As always, I have substantial interactions with the residents about matters of concern to them. The greatest emphasis always is fire danger, people living unhoused in Malibu, telecommunications and landslide. And lo and behold, tonight we've got telecommunications and landslide coming up on the agenda. And lastly, I have spent a lot of time trying to learn the telecommunications law, the sequel law, the law regarding landslides, the technical, geotechnical things regarding landslides. It's a lot of information to digest. So I won't be surprised if these appeals take a while to resolve. I have a lot of comments about the appeals that I could make generically because they really apply to all of them, but I'll hold off till later. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Bruce. Since we last met, I've been busy like everybody else. The I also attended the Dolphin Awards. That was, I think, the 30th version of the Dolphin Awards they've had or the 29th. And I think the community owns a big big round of applause for the orcs who've put that on and created that and has created something that where people who do something to help the community are recognized. And they've kept it up and it would be a shame if it ever went away. The I did go down to join Karen at the JPIA. I wasn't there the whole time. But I took some wonderful programs while I was there and then made the drive back. And it was, it's really wonderful what they're able to do for us and the money that being part of that saves the city of Malibu. Yesterday, I took part in a fire brigade training along with Mikey and many members of the Malibu West Fire Brigade and and some people from Malibu Park and Point Doom. And I I think it's really important that we help other ones start in the community. We have a more resilient community. We have to have a lot of people who aren't who are ready to help immediately because that's where we are. I'd like to take a moment to thank Kian. Your pictures, when you send them to me, I've always sent them on to the city. I was very pleased tonight to see that Yolanda and her crew have been able to get some actual change by pressuring people to have two pickups on weekends, pressuring people to have extra dumpsters. And I think your next round of pictures are going to be better. But that's just me because I'm an optimist. But keep it up. Thank you. And the other thing I did was I worked the the Public Safety Expo with the with the CERT team and a lot of really neat things there and I think I'm getting a pool pump. So really appreciate that opportunity being there for the members of the community and for me as well. So thank you very much. And that takes us to the next page, which is the consent calendar. Have any items been pulled by the public from the consent calendar?
Yes, items 3B4 and 3B6 have been pulled.
3B4 and 3B6?
Correct.
Okay. Do I see Bruce's hand? Would you like to pull anything from the consent calendar? You're muted.
I was looking for the unmute button. So yes, I'd like to pull 3B8, please.
3B8. Is that it?
I got one, Paul.
And Steve?
I'd just like to pull 3B10 for a question, please.
3B10 for a question. Okay. Can we have a motion to pass the rest of the consent calendar?
I'm moved to pass the rest of the consent calendar, accepting items 3B4, 3B6, 3B8 and a question on 3B10.
Second. Motion, a second. Kelsey, can you take the role, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a member of the public that asked for 3B4 to be published. Is that member of the public in the room?
Yes, our speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi, Joe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thanks. So, Honorable City Councilor, I am here to ask that this study be sure to include analyzing all the causes of the erosion of our beaches and find the best solutions. In the Los Angeles County Public Beach Facilities Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment published in April 2016, it states that by 2100, if the more extreme forecasts for sea level rise it states that by twenty-one hundred, if the more extreme forecasts for sea level rise occur, the narrow and more sediment limited beaches along the Malibu coast may make it impractical to maintain adequate beach widths and protect assets from higher sea levels, beach erosion and storm waves. Then it goes on to say that resources would likely be directed to Santa Monica and Torrance because of their location to adequate sand deposits for beach nourishment. Zuma County Beach and other Malibu facilities may be considered for nourishment because of their importance to the public recreation system. Further study will be needed to assess the feasibility of the periodic replenishment of Malibu region facilities to ensure that the sand can be kept there for reasonable periods of time with no significant impact. So I'm just making sure that this study will be included in our Malibu studies so we can hopefully be able to replenish all our Malibu beaches. This is serious and these studies are impactful. The LA County Study also did not assess areas protected by hard structures and this was not included in the analysis. These armored sections, including seawalls for new and old development, have a huge impact on beach erosion. And I'd like it to be put in the public record that these need to be a part of the analysis to get an accurate reading of our situation here due to all the reasons and obtain solutions for our coastline's beach erosion. This would hopefully help our long-term sea level rise management strategy be something other than a managed retreat or attempt to elevate structures, but actually allow beaches to replenish naturally. I have called and left a message with the person in charge of the Ringe Dam Project, by the way, and have yet to hear back on where we are with that project, which should replenish Surfside Beach and beyond. I hope that this study and our city council can also follow up on this. All of our effort, all of this effort to make natural solutions to protect our beaches should get Malibu to the next level of the blue city status, I'm sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have a motion to pass?
I have a quick question. Do we proceed? John, do we procedurally need to open the public hearing on an item like this first? Or is it okay to proceed kind of informally like this?
This is not a public hearing item, Councilmember Pearson. So no, you do not need to open a public hearing.
Even though it was pulled off consent?
That is correct. It's an order of business at that point.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I'll make a motion to approve this.
I see Bruce's hand is raised.
Yeah, well, I have a procedural question as well as a subsequent question. So to follow up on what Mikey was asking, I mean, it seems to me like we always get a report before we go into comment when somebody pulls an item. So I don't know why we didn't do that. But in any event, you know, Joe's comments are well taken. Is that something that will be part of this analysis or is and it's not candid?
Yes, Councilmember Silverstein. The item three B four is an amendment to an agreement for the Environmental Service Associate for a coastal vulnerability assessment. Have a quick presentation and it is just two slides. If Parker can help me with that, that'd be great. I guess he's not. The what we're asking is for a two-year extension to the existing agreement to go to September thirty, twenty twenty-three. On April twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen, City Council directed staff to allocate funding for a coastal vulnerability assessment. This assessment will analyze Malibu's vulnerabilities, potential impacts and sea level rise for shore, mid and long term. This will help the city better understand its risk and proactivity and proactively create a plan for a sea level rise. But the liberals on this agreement is to have an interactive GIS web map with different layers. So the community can see the sea level rise projections and the hazardism to see on the city coastal resources. During COVID, prior to COVID, we were, the technical portion of the agreement has been completed. Now we are under the trying to present to the community the results. And knowing that we have a community that is very engaged, we want to get their input in order to complete this program. So the reason why we asking for this two years extension is that we are planning to have two public workshops that were part of prior to the COVID, the global pandemic. So we just need to come back to that and plan ahead. Having virtual meetings and in-person meetings, that's something that we're still, even on city council, trying to manage how we're going to be doing that. This is such a sensitive subject that we would like to have as much input from that community. So this can be successful. And that is the reason why we are asking for a two-year extension. We are not asking for more money. As I mentioned before, the technical portion has been completed. This will be only before to plan the next two public workshops to get feedback.
Thank you, Yolanda. Any questions from members of the council? We have a motion, but we don't have a second, I don't think.
I think we do.
Oh, we do?
We're all seconding.
There was a second from Councilmember Yurey.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kelsey, will you be kind enough to call a roll?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item three B six is an amendment to agreement for annual routine street maintenance services. And I see Rob's face, so I'm guessing he's going to give me a report on this.
Yes, real briefly. This amendment is to amend Burns Pacific, who is our maintenance contractor. We first had him under contract in two thousand and eighteen and their their term of the contract is three years. This is the first amendment that we're we're asking to bring to council for execution. As you, as most everyone knows, Burns Pacific has been our maintenance contractor since, I don't know, since the city's formed and we've gone out to to bid several times on again, in this project and they're consistently the 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 top contractor doing this. And so with that, we are requesting to authorize to go ahead and get an extension on this contract so we can maintain our all of our maintenance facilities and operations. And I'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. Is it appropriate for me to ask for the member of the public if they had a question they wanted to raise at this point?
Yes, it is, Mayor Grisanti.
Do we have a member of the public who pulled this?
Yes, we have Ryan here to speak.
Hi, Ryan. Do you have a question we can address while we have Rob here?
Yes. Rob is actually correct, but he didn't state the true history of the business association with this contractor. And it looks to me that this contract has again, as it did two, three years ago and in two thousand and fifteen as well, is not set out for bid. There is no bid committee that reviews the bids or actively solicits bids of companies that provide this type of service, including, for instance, the city of Santa Monica that has trucks that can fill potholes or LA County. And so it is a considerable amount of money and there's a lot of standby charges, whether the services are provided or not. For instance, like having a weed eater piece of equipment on the back of a truck has an hourly charge. So it is a huge expense for our small city and we hear the same response every time this contract and several others for this city come up for renewal. And so we like the people we've got and we'd rather not change and where the staff, we get to choose. So I think that this should not be extended tonight. You do have a policy on contract extensions when it's largely for services. And it would be a one-year extension would be appropriate. And I would suggest that you do that now if you're desperate and that you cast widely and solicit actively competitive bids for this substantial cost to the city. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I see Bruce's hand.
Yeah, so two comments and I'll make a motion on this one. First comment is, this is a proposed amendment. Just note, the staff report has just the one-page amendment, doesn't have the contract. It would be good in the future to have the contract that we're being asked to approve an amendment or an extension of because there's really no way to know what the contract is that we're agreeing to extend without seeing it. So I have a question. Is this the standard type of contract that we have for lots of other consultants where it's terminable on, you know, ten days, thirty days notice by other party?
It's it's our, it's it's a standard agreement. And I, John, what do you, it's, I'm pretty sure it is. I'm pretty, I'm not one hundred percent certain it is, but it's our, it's one of our standard agreements we have with our contractors and I believe we have that term that's that's in there.
I've seen that in just about every agreement that the city's brought forward. That's been the city's agreement. But assuming that that's in there, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It takes us to item three B ten. You said you had a question.
The item three B eight was also pulled by the council and I do have speakers who'd like to comment.
I'm sorry, I wrote Ryan's name next to the wrong one. Sorry, three B eight. Can you, is, do we have someone who can give us a report on three B eight? Bruce?
No, I said, I don't understand how we can have public comment on something that the public was content to have decided on consent and I pulled after there was an announcement that nobody had pulled it.
The speakers had contacted me in advance of the item and let me know that they'd like to speak only if it was pulled by someone else.
Seems odd to me, but okay.
Do we have such a person?
Well, the computer report first.
Good evening, Mayor. What we have before us this evening is the resolution reflecting the council's action on an appeal that was for the project at Malibu Road. And on these slides, if needed, these are some of the changes that were made in section three, the findings. These changes were made with the city attorney's office. The staff made them in consultation with the city attorney's office to reflect some of the concerns and actions that were raised at the previous council meeting where this was heard. If there are any other questions, I'd be glad to have them, answer them.
Yeah. Quickly, Richard. So these, I mean, let me just make sure I understood that. You said it clearly, but I need to still make sure I understand. These changes were based on our discussion at the meeting when we voted on this item.
Yes, that's correct. There were changes that the council had asked and then for staff to return with the resolution.
Okay, thank you. You said it, but I was also reading at the same time, so I wanted to confirm I had that right. Thank you.
Understand.
Mr. Malka, if I could confirm, those changes are not incorporated into the staff report that's before the council tonight, is that correct? Those are changes requested by Councilmember Silverstein?
I'm sorry, yes, correct. Thank you. I appreciate that. There were changes that staff made to the resolution. We did that in concert with the Assistant City Attorney. And those changes, yes, they're in the in the the report. I want to say too, but I think before the last meeting, perhaps I'm confusing this with another item. We did distribute a red line, I believe, before the last council meeting in September, when this item was originally on the consent calendar. And then subsequent to the publishing of the report, the staff working on the report, there were some additional comments that were discussed between the Assistant City Attorney and the Mayor Proton. And I'm sorry, yes, that's what you see in in front of you.
Okay. So now I'm thoroughly confused.
And me too.
So I missed the twenty-seventh meeting, as you know. So apparently there was a staff report with the changes that the council requested. No, at that meeting. But now there's changes on top of that requested by Mayor Proten. Is that what I'm hearing? And that's what we were looking at on the screen? I'm a little lost.
Bruce's hand is raised.
Well, I can shed light on this and I believe I can do so with complete accuracy. But I understand we have public comments, so I'm not sure it's appropriate to do so before we have the public comment.
Do we have a public, someone to comment?
That's fine. We can go to public comment.
Yes, we have Don Schmitz and Scott Gillan. We'll hear from Don first.
Thank you. Don, are you in the room?
Audio check. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. If you put the timer on. Thank you, council members. I'm going to speak directly to what is in in front of you properly, which is, which is the proposed resolution. I just want to note that two planning commissioners on the non-provailing side sitting in correspondence to the council urging basically another bite out of the apple in regards to approval or denial. I think that's improper. What's before you tonight is whether or not the resolution accurately reflects the deliberations of council. I believe that it does. I have the transcripts in front of me and I'm just going to hit a couple salient points in the short amount of time that I have. And during the deliberations, several of you asked staff to confirm part of my testimony to you, which was that the setbacks from the mean-high tideline were in fact pretty controlling and pushed the proposed building back further than what this string line would do so. That was asked again several times and confirmed by the staff. The motion per the staff report was made by Councilman Farrar and seconded by Councilman Pearson. And then at around two thirty-six, Councilman Silverstein, he asked to make a friendly amendment. And in the transcripts, you can see that he acknowledges that the the importance of the setback to the mean-high tideline is in fact important. And he didn't like the verbiage that pertains to having a certificate of occupancy as a definition for the string line on the dwellings. I believe that this resolution accurately reflects that. That friendly amendment was accepted. It goes on to say in the revised resolution before you, it properly cites LIP Section three point six G four that for a dwelling is what the string line should be drawn to. The references for a certificate of occupancy, which were in the staff report before you when you deliberated on this last, has been removed pursuant to the direct statement by Councilman Silverstein. Additionally, I want to read this very specific language in the revised resolution, which goes on to say, and the ten-foot setback from the most landward mean-high tideline was generally used instead when designing the applicants project since the setback was more restrictive than the building and deck string lines measured from the next upcoast property. That's hugely important. I believe it is a good faith reflection of what Councilman Silverstein put in there. Again, this is not another bite out of the apple. It's a resolution. And Councilman, getting your vote was was important to me and I really appreciated your deliberations on this. So they're both in there. The certificate of occupancy has been taken out. The definition of dwelling and string lines are in there and the new language.
Don, that's your time.
As well. So with that, I thank you very much for your time. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Don.
Our final speaker is Scott Gillan.
I'm just here. I am, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. I don't have anything to add to Don's comment. I'm available for questions or answers if they should arise.
Thank you. I see Richard. Uh, I see Richard's hand first and then Bruce's.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor. I looked through my notes. I'm sorry, I was too focused on tonight's appeals. I did miss, uh, speak. So those were the changes that, uh, the mayor pro tem had proposed. Uh, after we had prepared the the resolution, uh, with the city attorney's office to reflect the changes from the August meeting. And so that's what you have before you was the the red line change, the the red line, it was the changes that were proposed by the mayor pro tem. Those are not in the resolution. The resolution, uh, contains the language of the meeting.
Can we put those changes back on the screen for a moment? And then let Bruce speak? Okay. So are these all the changes he requested and some were incorporated and some were not? No, Bruce?
Okay. So Don Schmitz, though, is half correct, and 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 I don't mean to suggest that he was purposely otherwise not correct. I just think it's a little complex. The hearing that we had originally, as Don acknowledged and recognized, I was going to vote against the, um, approval. Uh, because I didn't agree with the rationale that was put forward by the staff. Um, notwithstanding that, there would have been a three-one approval, or I'm sorry, there would have been a three-two approval anyway. But but I was opposed to the rationale that was being approved. Um, I was convinced, I think Mikey might have made the argument, I was convinced by an argument that there was an alternative basis upon which to approve the project that wasn't the basis being advocated by the staff. And on the assurance that that would be the basis upon which the approval was occurring, I voted in favor of it and asked that the resolution be altered to properly reflect that that was going to be the basis. Um, the city attorney with the staff then created a resolution. It went into the staff report. I did not comment on that. It was provided. If you remember, my house got destroyed in a accident, so despite that, I went and looked at it, I amended it that evening. This is now going on four weeks ago, two weeks before, two weeks before the hearing last. Notwithstanding the fact that I provided these changes two weeks before the hearing last, which I think accurately reflect one hundred percent what was discussed at the meeting and agreed to. This was not presented to the city council in an amended report of any sort. It was just thrown up for a second at the last meeting. We then, we then put it on for this week. It's still not in the report. I mean, you're you're getting to see this on the screen for the first time because it wasn't included in the report account. Don't know why. But in any event, all I've done is amended the findings to reflect that only three out of four council members agreed that the first finding was appropriate and that we, and that four of us agreed that the second finding was appropriate. I can't agree to the resolution that's being put forward because it says we're finding that the first rationale is agreeable, and I don't agree with it. So, you know, if you go back to the hearing again, it was very clear that I didn't agree with it. It was very clear that we all agreed we would have the alternative rationale instead, and we would have a four-one vote. And now we're getting, being given the original rationale once again. I can't sign off on that. I can sign off on this proposal, which shows that I don't agree with that rationale because I don't want it to be a precedent, but I agree with the other rationale. It's that simple.
Am I correct in assuming that the 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 most important portion of what I see here is the additionally, a fourth member of the city council was satisfied that the appeal should be denied? Because, and then later, three lines later, when it says the difference and the difference between the uh, I'm sorry, I've got two partial participants with raised hands, and it's in front of what I'm trying to read, but and I'm trying to read the rest of what's on the page. Difference between the setback actually used and the setback that would have resulted from drawing a string line to the appliance, incomplete structure is de minimis, is, are those the two crucial pieces?
And the fact that it was only three people who determined that in, that the incompletely constructed structure did not constitute a dwelling, because I didn't agree with that. Otherwise, it just says we found that.
Well, it's impossible to dwell in in something that doesn't have a certificate of.
We're not gonna, not gonna re-argue the substance. You know, I'm just saying this does not reflect what we, what we, what we did. So. So I would like to have this resolution approved with the proposed changes. It doesn't alter the approval of the project and the denial of the appeal, but it does preserve the argument that I made during the hearing. And it also reflects that I agreed to the alternative rationale as put forward by Mikey, the applicant, and others. So I don't understand the issue, why this is an issue.
Thank you. I see Mikey's hand is raised.
I think my first comment is the changes that Bruce proposes, I've never seen a resolution look like this. I've never seen one that parses out different parts. Consensus is consensus. And so this, this, to me, would, I I'd love to hear from an attorney or planning director, because this is a totally different way of writing a resolution than I've personally ever seen. And it's, um, I it, it seems more. I mean, I'm seeing it for the first time, too. So I, it seems more focused on details of the hearing than the actual proposal at the end. I mean, it, two different ways of getting there, I guess. So I I'd like to hear from, you know, s- staff or attorneys about why we're seeing it now, and it it just, it does seem like a very different format that I'm completely not used to.
Is Mr. Cotty available?
Yes, Mayor Pearson, members of the council, again, good evening. Um, a resolution is a document that's designed to capture the majority opinion of the city council with regard to an action. It's the council's job tonight to approve whether or not this resolution that's before you tonight in the packet constitutes what the council believes was its final action from a couple weeks ago. If the council believes that the changes proposed by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein are the more accurate reflection, the council is free to approve that action. I would note, however, that your council member Pearson is right, we don't typically add what one council member believes to be the state of the facts or the law, because again, that one council member's decision doesn't reflect the majority of the council. Um, I can certainly, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein, trying to convince you otherwise, if he believes that this, his proposed language accurately reflects the council majority, um, again, I'll allow him to to convince you of that fact. Um, again, the resolution is designed to capture the majority of the council. Where it says three members of the city council, that's the majority. A fourth member's position isn't a majority position, and therefore we would argue that it should not, should not be included in the resolution. Again, Councilmember Silverstein is certainly welcome to try and convince you of this.
Thank you, John. I see Mikey's at the top with his hand, and then Bruce, and then.
I just, my hand was just, oh, sorry.
Karen was next, and then back to Bruce.
Thank you, Paul. Um, I understand Bruce's point. But I will say this procedure is precedent-setting to to have editing to a resolution after it's been approved. So I'm, I'm looking for guidance from our city attorney. Um, I have not seen something like this before in a council meeting. And I, I, uh, I don't think we should be setting this precedent where we're making changes that we're all seeing for the first time during a meeting. So, um, what what does that mean for a consent item? That's my question to, um, to City Attorney Cotty.
Again, Councilmember Farrar, the item for you is to, is for the council to decide if the resolution that's before you in the packet accurately reflects your decision from a couple weeks ago. If it does, of of a call of the question on that, that fact is perfectly appropriate. If you believe, after reviewing the changes proposed by Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein, that these more accurately reflect the decision of the council from that night, you're certainly welcome to amend the recommended motion in the consent item and and make these changes. Um, with regard to, again, with regard to parsing out resolutions, we don't typically do that. Um, we don't typically add the views of one council member. We typically phrase resolutions in the form of the council majority because you act as a body. You don't act individually. So when the body makes a vote, it makes an action, that action is supposed to be reflected in the resolution, not, not the views of one council member.
Thank you, John. Bruce?
Yeah, so Ca- Karen and I are actually, and like you're in violent agreement on the issue of whether it's an appropriate process to have this put forward for the first time at the meeting. It's not. Um, that's why it was provided to the city attorney and the city staff four weeks ago. Um, but not provided to the city council. I don't know why it was not provided to the city council as an alternative, but this is not something I threw together twenty-four hours ago and asked to be thrown up on the screen today. Um, I'm not going to try to convince anyone to do what I'm saying makes sense. I'll note that the only action the majority of the city council took was to approve the project and deny the appeal. The rationale itself is not the action of the city council. So by the rationale of the city attorney, there would be no rationale stated in the resolution. It would simply say the appeal is denied, the application is granted. But since there is a discussion of the rationale, I think it ought to be accurate. But, you know, if it's not going to be accurate, that's fine. I'm just going to vote no, and it'll be three to two instead of four to one. That's fine, but I'm not going to vote for a resolution which inaccurately reflects what was done.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen, your hand is still raised?
Thank you, yeah. I, it seems to me, maybe I'm wrong, that we have every opportunity to approve the wording of a resolution during these meetings. And and that is why we meet in public. So I'm not, I'm still not sure how how we got the wording wrong when we had an opportunity to get it right uh, when this was on the agenda.
I'm going to call the question. And, uh, do I need a second at this point, Kelsey?
Yes, I don't believe we've had a motion either way. So you need a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, pass three B eight as the resolution as depicted in the, in the pre-printed form. Is there a second?
I'll second the discussion, but I still have a question before we vote.
Sure.
Um, want me to proceed?
Yes, please proceed. And then I'll call on Steve Earring.
I, I guess, um, you know, at this point, I can't see what Bruce wrote. I, I can't really go through it, so. Um, it struck, struck me obviously odd. I'm not used to anything like that. I I doubt I would vote for in its present form, but still, I really couldn't even repeat what he wrote. Um, so I know, I know Bruce likes to work with language a lot. Should, um, John, should this have been sent out to us sooner, or how, you know, it feels like we end up at almost an impossible situation right here where, I mean, I'm fine with the motion the way it is, but at the same time, you know, I want to give due respect to any of the city council members that have questions, but right now, I, I, you know, even though I'm fine with the resolutions it is, I couldn't say that I totally understand or even, you know, fully read what Bruce wrote.
My understanding was that, uh, Councilmember Silverstein and Mr. Russen worked on language before it appeared at your last city council meeting, and that that language was not fully accepted by Mr. Russian, Mr. Russen, and that language is the resolution that appears before you tonight. Councilmember Silverstein at the last, um, and I keep saying council member, my, my apologies, Mayor Pro Tem, um, Silverstein, um, put up that this, the the slide that you saw tonight was up at your last city council meeting. And I was, I wasn't, you weren't present, I wasn't, uh, privy to that language beforehand either. And so I've looked at it now, and and like you, it doesn't strike me as something that we typically do with the city. Again, though, you're welcome to approve it if it's something that you believe accurately reflects the decision of the coun- council at the time it heard the appeal. Um, I would ask Mr. Malka to jump in and give his two cents as to whether or not he believes it accurately reflects the decision of the council.
My concern here with the proposed language changes from discussing this with the city attorney's office is not so much what is in the, the body of the main text on each of those findings, it's the additional conclusions that are added to the end of each finding. I was not at the meeting, but it's my understanding from our assistant city attorney that he had concerns that those were leading to a determination uh, that was not something that was a subject of discussion. And that was the concern that was related to me and why, uh, our assistant city attorney wanted some additional time and discussions with the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Richard. Steve, you've been waiting patiently.
And that's, that's, I, I guess. When we looked at this four weeks ago, we said we want, we, and and I'm trying to recall that I think Bruce asked to have John Schmitz and his team look at it and take a look at the words and make sure they were happy with it. And I thought we'd send it back. We sent it back to the city to do what? What, what were they supposed to do with this over the last four weeks? Anything? They decided they wanted to do it, ignore it? What, what, why did we send it back? Or what happened to it when it got sent back? Anybody do anything with it?
My understanding was that, uh, Bruce and and, uh, Mr. Ruskin got together and he, he made, Bruce made several suggestions, and some of them were adopted and some of them weren't. Is that correct, Bruce?
No, because, you know, Trevor's not on this call, and you're all relating what you understand Trevor did, and I was present in the communication, so I'm telling you what occurred. And to Karen's point, when we had the meeting on the appeal, we voted not to accept the resolution that had been prepared in advance of the hearing. That was our vote. We sent it back to be redone along the lines that I was willing to accept based on the discussion we had at the hearing. We never, as a body, ever looked at another resolution after that because the city, assistant city attorney and the staff drafted the resolution following the meeting. I disagreed with it, but that discussion occurred after it had been prepared. Not a single change was made after it was prepared. So I mean, if 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 what's being said is after Trevor presented it in the staff report, he had a discussion with me, and he included that which he agreed, which was nothing, and left in it everything he agreed with, which is nothing. That's fine, that's, but that's the accurate description. We didn't have a discussion before this ever was put before the city council. We had a discussion after the resolution was placed in the agenda packet. It then appeared in the agenda packet, again, identical. We still hadn't had a discussion, by the way. I was asking for a discussion. Steve McClary asked that I have that discussion and asked this assistant city attorney, we have discussion, but it didn't occur. I emailed the, the, um, deputy attorney and said, let's talk about it. That conversation occurred for the first time about four days ago. So again, it was put into the agenda report without there being any discussion with me. Those are the accurate facts. Notwithstanding that, John Cotty's telling you, it's different than what you normally do. Okay, well, so what, actually, unless it's improper? So it's different. Lots of things are different. Lots of things are better sometimes when they're different. Other things are worse. But in any event, that's the procedural background of how we got where we got. I am following exactly what we voted on, which was to not approve the resolution that was put forward at the original hearing. I was supposed to go back and confer with the deputy attorney, and then the resolution was supposed to be created. That didn't occur. The resolution was created, and then after it was presented to the council, the co- the conference occurred for the first time. That's where, that's how we got where we are.
I see Trevor is in the room. Trevor, do you have, uh, anything to say about the process?
Um, sure, I I just joined in, so I'm not sure what the conversation was previously on this one. Um, I I apologize, but, uh, you know, we were at the prior hearing, there's direction to memorialize the reasoning of the council. We put that together. Um, the mayor pro tem submitted a number of comments on that to Adrian and I. A number of them were included. Some of them, we felt did not, did not reflect the, the reasoning of the majority, and then. And then, um, subsequent to that, then there was a, a second. I, I think, uh, I don't know, was, I think, I think the, the, the comments were further refined from, from, uh, the mayor pro tem. I, we, I tried to, uh, reach out. You know, we had, but this was a time when, um, the mayor pro tem was having issues with, uh, when his house got flooded and it was difficult to make contact and we were, we were both busy. And then we did speak, um, last, last week, um, about it. Um, but that, that's where it is. It's a, it, you know, you're down to at this point, you know, you, you, there's the memorialization and then council member Silverstein has, um, wants to lay out his personal, um, reasoning for two of the findings. Like I stated, some changes to two of the findings if those have been presented here tonight.
Trevor, is it accurate to say that the resolution before us is not the resolution that was before us four weeks ago when this was originally consi- contin- considered or five weeks ago, six weeks ago, whatever the hell it was?
Yeah, there's been, there's been alterations to the language, um, because the direction was not to adopt the resolution, but to, um, to provide changes to the resolution. And that's what staff attempted to capture was the reasoning of the majority of the council.
But I'll, I'll withdraw the request to make the changes. I'm just going to vote no on the resolution. That's all.
Okay. So we, I have a most, I've made a motion that we call a question and adopt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-four. Is there a second?
I, I believe I seconded it.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call it the role, Kelsey?
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Council member Pearson?
Uh, yes.
Council member Farrak?
Yes.
Council member Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Silverstein?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're now at three B ten. And, uh, was that, I don't, Bruce, did you?
Not me.
That was me.
I'm sorry, Steve. You were going to ask a question, I think.
If I can remember, uh, I, I guess the, this, this motion or this services agreement is for about ninety-five thousand dollars. How far does that cover us? You know, the Christine took us through the beginning or the a summary of what's going to happen at the beginning of the meeting. Does this carry us all the way through to get to the November tenth date? Uh, and to get those nine items done, or is there more funding ne- necessary? Anybody know? I'm just trying to get, people are asking me, you know, how much are we spending? Where are we going? And I'm just trying to make sure I got an answer for them.
Very good question, if I may, or I'm sorry.
Please do. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good evening. Um, as, um, the deputy city attorney, uh, Christine Woods had explained in the beginning of the meeting, uh, this process is rel- of the city being the petitioner is relatively new and has made it very challenging to try to scope these amendments. Um, we're still not certain whether we're, what the scope will be of the November public hearings. Uh, however, we had scoped these or, um, I'm sorry, prepared these amendments, um, with the thought that that would get us through March. The meetings in March.
This ninety-five grand will take us through March.
That, that is the hope, yes. Um, unless we're throwing other curveballs and there's additional work that's needed at this time. Um, it is believed that this will handle the work necessary to get us through March.
Okay, you, you guys are pretty comfortable with the, the outline Christine laid out that this will cover us through to, to, to March to get to that, that meeting or that's that timeframe, right?
For these two consultant contracts, in addition, as Christine mentioned, we may need some additional consultant work uh, for community surveys or other, um, other items um, that may be needed as we get questions regarding certain criteria.
And in addition to Bruce's hand being raised, I see Christine's hand. May we take Christine? I had a few Bruce, yes, Christine, please.
I, I was just trying to get, um, closer to council member Yurin's question, but Liz got there. Sorry.
Well, good. Good job, Liz. Bruce?
So the first time school separation came up after I was elected, I asked if we were going to get a, if we could get an estimate of what it's going to cost for soup to nuts to get through this process. And, you know, Christine, I think correctly said I can't give you one because it's, it's a fluid situation. Uh, you know, I've been a litigator for thirty-five years. That's often the case. Notwithstanding that, lawyers generally know how much something's going to cost in, in terms of a range and a ballpark, you know? For all I know, and I suspect it's the case, it's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, possibly more than a half a million. It could get, could get closer to a million dollars by the time this is done. It could exceed that. It's kind of silly to just keep approving little pieces of it as if that's the decision point, you know, having these discussions. We have to, we're either going to go forward or we're not going to go forward. You can't, you know, either cut the string, cut it, cut it and stop spending the money or you spend what you need to spend to get it done. So I'm going to vote to approve this because we're proceeding to get it done. Um, but, but you know, it's going to, it, it's silly to fight about ninety thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred fifty thousand dollars in a process that we're stuck with until it's over. That's just the way it works.
Bruce, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue against ninety-five thousand dollars. I'm just trying to get my head around, we're sort of getting like nibbled to death by ducks. You, you know, I'd like to get a sort of a perspective of where we're going. That was my whole purpose.
We're going to get nibbled to death. It's the way it works.
Thank you, Bruce. Mikey, I see your hand raised and then Lisa and then Karen.
I, I was just going to say, prepare for the nibbling because by law we have to approve contracts over a certain amount, over ten thousand dollars. So yeah, so it'll be a lot of nibbling and there'll be a lot of consent calendar and, and I don't think that will end anytime soon. That's it. And I'll second if it wasn't seconded.
Thank you, Mikey. I see Lisa may want to give us some input.
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, where we stand now is what we have included in the budget. And, you know, we're seeing that depending on what happens in the November meeting, we may be coming back at mid-year to add something to this pot. Um, but Mikey was correct because we don't know where we're leading. It's hard to give these consultants, you know, an agreement until we know what we're asking them to do. And that kind of is predicated on what happens at these various meetings. So indeed, because we bring anything over twenty-five thousand dollars to the council, even if we put the money in the budget, um, you will see these contracts come back. Um, again, we're updating you that this is going on and we, we're reluctant to just hand over a larger contract to a consultant until we know what that scope of work is going to be. So unfortunately, it will come to you in pieces, um, but we do have the money currently in the budget to cover what we're talking about now. Again, as things get added, we may come back for more.
Thank you, Lisa. Karen?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, we, we'd love to have a clearer path. Um, we are in an unusual position where uh, the Lakewood County Committee has never had a city as a petitioner. That's why we had to go through the preliminary hearing process. You know, which added to time and money and, and resources. Um, we'd love to have a negotiating partner who we feel is working in good faith. That too adds time and money and resources. Um, we'd love to have quicker responses from our negotiating partner. And I think we would like to, if possible, have clearer direction from the agency that we're working with. But we have to work with the hand that we're being dealt. So we'd all like this to be quicker and, um, a more clear path financially and, and, uh, i- in every other way, but, but this is what it is. And Bruce, I appreciate what you said. Uh, it is what it is. Um, and as of yet, it is still, uh, the city's number three priority behind, excuse me, behind public safety and, um, and emergency preparedness. Uh, number three that the council has voted on is school district separation. So thank you to everybody for the support on this.
So since we have a, um, motion and a second, may I call the question? Kelsey?
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
Yes.
Council member Pearson?
Yes.
Council member Farrak?
Yes.
Council member Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes care of the consent calendar. Which puts us at item four A. And I'm hoping that, uh, people will allow me a eight-minute break at this point. So we'll be back here at, uh, quarter to nine. Okay?
Five minutes. And if you could, please turn off your microphones and cameras.
Thank you.
We're live.
Thank you.
Is it warm?
Wait for Mikey's picture to light up. Oh, Mikey's a half a minute late.
Mikey went back to Italy.
He did say it was a good trip.
Yeah, scared him off or something.
If I hadn't put my phone in a lockbox, I'd call him.
I sent him a quick text.
As did I.
I'm sure he has not forgotten. Something must have come up.
Could always go down the street and knock on his door. Hi, Mikey. And we're back.
Oops, took a little longer. I thought I'd eat some popcorn. Sorry.
All right, we'll live. This now we're at item four A. This is appeal number twenty-one dash zero zero two, an appeal of planning commu- commission resolution number twenty-one dash oh one. And we now will have a staff report.
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Grisanti and members of city council. The project before you is an appeal of the planning commission approval of coastal development permit. And other discretionary requests for a new two-story, single-family residence. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located in the Big Rock residential neighborhood inland of Pacific Coast Highway. Located in the single-family low-density zoning district. The site is currently vacant, but was once developed with a residence that was destroyed in the nineteen ninety-three Malibu Topanga Fire. Next slide. The project includes five thousand and thirty square feet of total development square footage. This includes all covered patios, attached garage, and detached cabana. A variance is requested for not meeting the minimum required factor of safety. More of that to come later in this presentation. A site plan review is requested for construction over eighteen feet in height. However, the areas over eighteen feet, which is three hundred and forty square feet, would be obstructed by portions of the residents that are under eighteen feet in height when viewed from surrounding primary view determination locations recorded with the city. As a result, no portion over eighteen feet will obstruct protected views of surrounding residents. A minor modification is requested for a twenty percent reduction of the required east side yard setback from the required nine foot one inch to the proposed seven foot three inches. Next slide, please. The amended minor modification involves a reduction in the east side yard setback shown here as area one. Also in blue. Located along the driveway shared with the applicant's neighboring lots on the east. Such area maintains a seven foot three-inch side yard setback. Again, that makes up twenty percent reduction of the required setback. The remainder of the side yard setback shown as area number two conforms with the required setback. The reduced side yard setback is again the area shown in blue as area number one. The house provides a thirty-four foot eight-inch west side yard setback, which is over twenty feet wider than required. Next slide. No development is proposed on slopes steeper than five to one. As shown in this color-coded slope analysis, the proposed development is all within the yellow area that represents areas five to one or flatter. While the slide is showing, it should be noted that the street easement was not included as part of the net lot area calculation for establishing the required total developments for footage and the maximum allowed improvement coverage. Next slide. As shown in the west elevation, the lower level should be, would be mostly subterranean and the entire residence is below eighteen feet. Below, excuse me, is eighteen foot line below the existing grade, which is also true for the rest of the residence. The south elevation is the only building facade that entirely exceeds eighteen feet in height from finished grade. The south elevation would only be visible from the ocean. The project does not exceed twenty-four feet in height. And because the lower floor is mostly subterranean, it is expected to have a less than significant impact on neighborhood, neighborhood character. The residence has been designed to appear as a one-story structure from the north, east, and west elevation with the lower level of the house tucked below the ground floor. Next slide. Three properties within a thousand feet of the subject property requested primary view determinations in response to the proposed project as shown in this exhibit. Next slide. Staff confirm with the primary view determinations that the portion of the building in excess of eighteen feet in height is behind and obscured by the portions of the residence that is eighteen feet in height and lower, and therefore does not have impact on protected views of surrounding residences. Next slide. A variance was approved in twenty twelve to grant relief from factor safety requirements, which requires that new development proposed and landslide slides steep slopes unstable or weak soils or any other identified geologic hazard area shall be permitted only where a factor of safety of one point five static and a factor of safety of one point one pseudo static can be provided. The subject parcel is underlaid by the Big Rock Mesa landslide. Though the Big Rock Mesa landslide assessment district effectively dewaters the landslide area and increases stability, it is infeasible to rebuild the resident on the subject property in a fashion that would provide the code required factors of safety. The city geotechnical staff is present tonight and is available for further questions regarding the last slide or any other geotechnical questions that you may have. The analysis determine the factors of safety for wet is one point three seven and for dry is one point four static. It is not feasible to meet these standards on a, on a, on a per parcel basis, either through design or engineering of the project, given that the underlying landslide cannot be remediated to meet the minimum factor of safety. Consequently, the applicant has requested a variance with respect to this code requirement. The essential criteria of review remains, which is to establish that development of the project would not cause adverse site or structural stability impacts on the subject or surrounding parcels, and the project would not adversely affect the stability of the slope. City geotechnical staff reviewed in extensive geologic and geotechnical engineering studies for the subject property, which devise a set of complex site, site design and construction measures to achieve that requirement. City geotechnical staff determined that the applicant provided documentation that adequately supports the findings that the project will not adversely affect this subject or surrounding parcels or affect the stability of the slope. The agenda report for tonight's meeting addresses public comments provided to staff prior to the August twenty-third city council meeting, including view impacts, two-thirds rule, and the landslide. However, the report does not address a statement made by the public that a portion of the property has been transferred to the owner of an adjoining property. While there was an easement granted to an adjoining property owner to the west, the property boundaries remain intact. The survey shows the easement and staff verify that the proposed development would not interfere with the rights granted in the easement. Next slide. As stated before, city geotechnical staff and the applicant team are here to answer any questions related to the factor of safety variance. In conclusion, staff recommends that city council adapt resolution number twenty-one dash forty-eight, denying the appeal and approving the project as condition, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Can we have the appellant team?
Mayor Grisanti, did you want to do council disclosures first?
I'm so sorry. Yes, please. Let's do council disclosures. Steve, your hand is raised.
Well, yeah. I looked at this property, it came before me when we were on the planning commission that we never voted for. So I've visited the then and have not gone back since then. But I just have one question for Adrian, if I may. You said the variance was granted in two thousand and twelve?
Yes, correct. So there's a, there was a project that was presented before the planning commission council at that time, as well as the coastal commission and a variance that was requested at the time for a house was granted. Obviously, that was a different project than the one project before you. But I just wanted to state that a similar variance for that particular request was granted before.
Okay, I, okay. You made it sound like the, the variance we're talking about was granted in two thousand and twelve. That was a different variance.
So various were the same request, but it's for a different project.
Okay, that's my disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mikey, your disclosures?
Pretty similar to Steve's. Yeah, we looked at this and dealt with this property in some previous year lifetime, a number of years ago. And I've been to the property a couple of times, but it's been a while. I didn't need to go back. And just for complete disclosure, disclosure, we've had a family house in the area for decades, unknown exact age of that nineteen fifties at least. And I'm not an owner, but I did check and it's over a thousand feet away, just in case. I actually thought I'd give that a check myself. So I think that's my disclosure.
Councilmember Pearson, just to confirm, just like councilmember Yuren, you did not vote on this at the planning commission. This was a previous iteration, not the item before you tonight.
I believe that is true because I don't think we've ever voted on this project. It's long enough ago. I don't remember for sure, but I don't, I think if we voted on it, there'd be a, you know, either a house there now or something.
I, I don't, we, I don't think we voted on.
I don't think we did either, but there you go. No, I do not believe so. And you have told me if we had. So thank you.
Just for the record, no, the, the project that was before you, although almost exactly the same as this project, it was an amendment to a previous CDP that then expired. And this is a new application as before you. So you have not made a review of this application as before you today.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank, I did not remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Thank you, Adrian. Karen, I see your hand is raised.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I have not visited the site. I did receive a phone call from Norm Haney asking me if I had any questions about it, but that was really it. So nothing that was not in the report.
I'm going to make my disclosure. I, I got a, a call from Norm Haney and since I had never been on the property, I, I went there and he went over the plans with me. And as I was leaving, I recognized the car of one of my neighbors on the, on the property next door where there were kids playing in the yard. And as I was standing in the street talking to Norm, my neighbor came out with the person who owned the house next door and started telling me what wonderful people, people next door were and trying to get me to commit to voting for this, but I did not. So that's, that's, that's a disclosure for today. Bruce?
Pretty funny. Interesting coincidence, huh? It's, yeah. I, I don't have any, just, I, I didn't have any communications with any of the parties directly. I did send an email with a number of questions and comments to the city staff and city council, and I copied the applicant for this project or his representatives anyway, and I also copied the appellant because I wanted them to have an opportunity to see what my questions and concerns were. I watched the planning commission hearing and actually, as always, learned things from the hearing that are not in the staff report. The most important thing I learned was I, I got to hear E D Michaels speaking about the project and his comments are nowhere reflected in the staff report and I think are highly relevant. So I assume though somebody, hopefully he will speak tonight or someone else will speak about the same subject matter. But in the event that there is a lot of information outside the record before the council that's pertinent to the appeal. But the only things I learned that's outside the record is what's in the planning commission.
Thank you, Bruce. And I believe it's now time for me to ask the, yes.
I, I just, I forget. I did get a call from Norm Haney. Spent a little bit of time, didn't learn anything new.
Same exact thing that I forgot to report. We had a quick chat, told them didn't need to visit the site and nothing of any substance. Thank you.
Okay. Well, now is the time when the appellant team will present and do we have the appellant team available?
Yes, we have Haag Wong here to present.
Who? Okay. Yeah, hi, I'm here. Oh, I thought more, more time than this.
I'm adjusting the timer.
She will adjust it for you, Mr. And you will, you have the ability also to reserve time for rebuttal. And if you know how much you want.
Me and Don, Don Koalowski will be the one who's talking about it. And then he will he will provide a technical and expertise information. I will only present you with my perception, my concern as a long-term resident. Okay, my name is Haag Wong and I've been living on Big Rock for twenty-five years. Okay. This picture, it is, all is, it does water channel in, in that area. And all it meant is so is that this is nature erosion. Okay. All California coast are like that. Once you have it, they have the natural erosion. And of course, somebody doesn't think that way. They think that I should help it along and dig it. Okay. Now, Jonathan owns a house at two zero two seven zero next door. He owns it. And when he bought the two zero two seven two land, it came with an already approved building of three thousand six hundred eighty-two two foot, first one story building. Okay. And it is on the exactly old building lot and be a building pad, concrete peering pad, which is setback twenty feet from the edge of the cliff. Of course, that's not good enough for him. There's no money in there. He wanted twenty-five feet in front of the old building pad. Okay. That means essentially the front house will be on, beyond the edge of the cliff. And then he can dig down a ten, ten thousand cubic yard of dirt so that to accommodate a two-story. So he can a big giant house with two-story. I look at it. Wait a minute, that unsteady hillside cannot survive this. Okay. So I filed a complaint. So I file complaint with the state board, the state board of professional. Engineers, land surveyor and. Georges, I told him, you know what? The the scope analysis is floor. This cannot survive this and produce this kind of house. And when you look at the picture, the loss side change. Wow. Now come, if you look at a picture from 10 years ago, the width of the lot 2020272. Is much bigger than it is now. You don't you see this fence cut right through. Okay. And it is not a temporary fence. The next slide, please. Next slide. This is Don Michael's presentation way back in the planning commission back in January. You see that? 20272. Wow, the tiny slitter and where was the west of the whole land? Okay, but. This is how it is, and this is the public information Don Michael get. Next line, please. You see, they said they say they say use it the same old land, which is a much smaller and they also use half of the. The uh, the driveway as a line part of that. This is not true. Next slide, please. You can see the driveway common driveway is 20276 doesn't go there. How is a car to fly over six foot fence to 20272? Okay. 2020 is going to combine with 20270. So that's what it going to be. And I I told them this is fraudulent presentation and when the case I did based on it. It's not going to be the 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 planning has to go back to the drawing board. The enforcement agent and officer and the boards and county boards say, well. We already have a panel investigator open a full. Inquiry in this situation, you will hear about me. I said, you said America talked about, oh, that's not just one person. There's a panel there and you will know. You will know how we feel. Okay, wow, that's how it go. That's it. I mean, and and and. If this fraudulent, then they whole plan has go back to drawing board. Meanwhile, meanwhile. The house in 20270 is got up. You can see all those building material trash on the front. Okay, I checked it look. I said this is early this year. See, where's the permit for this? He got the house and there's no permit and I don't see it. I called the office two times. Nobody answered me. Okay, nobody called me back. I mean, that's the way that is. So bottom line is that looks like he's going to combine the two property in the humongous compound. Okay. Wow, how come a compound for a husband and wife and a small kid? This is wow, extravagant and this the the land cannot support that. Oh, no. Uh, Big Rock is known for rehab. There will be plenty buyer who want to rehab facility. Or or corporate one, we thought, okay, treat. For treatment result. So, oh, he will make it money and and be gone. And then now we end up with. Dozens of celebrity clients and supporting staff producing unstable landslide. And then, you know, we and Big Rock will end up having to hold back. Okay. And then you realize there's a slow dying down to the PC. The rest of your Malibu had to pay for it. Okay, so. Well, this is a playbook for everybody who want big, big bug. I mean, they just squeeze around and get. Get get approval by 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 variance, make a big, but get out here before harm comes this this way. And we are one long term person had to deal with. Okay. So I just let you know that and then the next will be give it to Don Kowalski. He will present the technical. Information why we have this kind of city ordinance, why we want to prevent this thing, these things are going to happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. This is Don Kobolinski. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Don.
Good. Right. The city planning document contains many statements, some of which refer to one, the Malibu LCP LIP. Two to the allowable variance and three, the site specific geotechnical reports. Those geotechnical reports never provided all the data and analysis required by the city's. 2013 geotechnical guidelines and the California State Geologist's requirements for properties. That are mapped in seismically induced landslide hazard zones. The Malibu LCP section 9.4D states slope stability analysis shall adhere to all provisions. The city guidelines for preparation of geotechnical reports. There is no variance for not performing the work required to properly evaluate estates a site's safety. Reports without the proper data analysis cannot be used to justify a variance. The planning commissioner can approve a variance only if it makes all of the findings of fact. Listed in the LCP LIP section 13.26.5. And those findings need to be supported by substantial evidence. The following findings cannot be made. A. And this is A from that list in their report in their 13265. The property does not have special circumstances that deprive it of privileges enjoyed by other properties does not. The city policy allows for rebuild of a single family dwelling that was destroyed by fire. With up to a 10% additional square footage as compared to the structure destroyed by the fire. Provided it is built in essentially the same footprint. The footprint is not essentially the same and the building is a significant larger than 10%. It actually exceeds 100% larger. B, the introduction of wastewater in the ground increases groundwater and effectively reduces the safety factor of the region. This property and nearby properties, the region, this property and your property, nearby properties. This is detrimental to public safety. The proposed future seepage pit is significantly closer to the descending slope. Than the pit used by the original house. The variances for a new this is C, excuse me, C is the variance for a new singulfinly structure that is significantly larger. And the original structure therefore is a special privilege not previously allowed in this area. D, the granting of this variance is not in conformance to LCP LIP section 9.4. Development standards which specifically states the geologic geotechnical study report. Must adhere to the city's guidelines for preparation of engineering geology and geotechnical reports. The soils geologic report shall include a statement by the consulting geologists and geotechnologists. Their property site is suitable for the proposed development. That the proposed development will be safe from geologic hazard. And the development will in no way contribute to the instability of the offsite property. That's what is required for them to say. However. Geo concepts does not state the site is safe from geologic hazard. They state in their 12. To 15 report quote, it is the opinion of this corporation based on the subsurface data. That the proposed project will be safe from landslide settlement or slippage. With the exception of renewed movement of the big rock landslide. And will not adversely affect adjacent property provided this corporations recommendations and those in the Malibu. Building code are followed and maintained. That qualified statement is not in conformance with city guidelines. This clearly means the site is subject to a geologic hazard from the big rock landslide. In addition, their data analysis were inadequate to properly make the first part of their statement. The rock strengths used for their analysis were more than three times greater than the rock strengths previously used in the area. They did not evaluate the effects of strong earthquake on the site's site stability as required by state law. Or determine the amount of displacement that would result from strong earthquake shaking as required by the city guidelines section 6.2, 6.5. The state requires they make the study. The city did not mandate that they do, but the city's own guidelines say they must provide. A displacement analysis showing how much it actually will move. They never did that. If they didn't do it, how can they determine it's safe? And H, the site is not physically suitable because the site is an inactive landslide subject catastrophic failure. In the event of strong earthquake, nearby earthquake and I, the variance does not comply with state law regarding building in a seismic hazard zone. Now, all of this, all this variance has to do with the planning documents. It doesn't deal with building codes. So I'm going to go to building codes, the building.
Lost you, Don?
I don't I look hello.
We're here.
Don, you are still unmuted. Maybe you're having an issue with your microphone.
I cannot hear him.
Mr. Wong, do you want to save the remaining time for rebuttal?
Yeah, because I cannot hear him. Something's wrong with the phone from him.
Yes.
Okay, we'll save your three minutes and 12 seconds for rebuttal and the applicant.
Thank you, Kelsey. Is the applicant available?
Yes, we'll hear from Norm Haney.
Hi, Norm. I know I don't need to tell you, but you can save time for rebuttal.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mayor Grisante. Again, my name is Norm Haney and I'm here representing the applicant. Before we start the clock, I I want to thank the entire planning department. And also the geotechnical department for the city of Malibu. They've done a great job at analyzing this project and I definitely appreciate it. I'm going to start my my presentation. I would like to have. Some notification when I talk for seven and a half minutes. I'll try and finish it up in one minute after that. And then we're going to leave the remainder of the time. For. I I for rebuttal and with. Our geology team as well as our legal advisor. So with that, you can start the clock. Back in 1968, when most of the homes were built on Big Rock, approximately 300 of them. This project was built. In 1993, it burned to the ground. The planning commission approved a house on this project, the city council agreed. And the California Coastal Commission approved a 3,682 square foot home. On August 7, 2012. Now this home spread across almost the entire width of the lot, blocking most of Mr. Wong's view. John Condon purchased the property. And decided to. Provide a larger view corridor for Mr. Wong. Consequently, he squeezed the house together and put almost half of it below the ground. That allowed him to use only 60% of the width of the property. Allowing for a 40% side yard setback and view corridor for Mr. Wong. Now, this is a very expensive process. It requires deep seated caissons, grade beams, slab on grade, retaining walls. And of course, the house. That. That new design. Using the previous. Approval in terms of the. Development. Was approved by the planning commission on November 6, 2017. And it was approved by the planning commission on March 26, 2018. There's there's a twist to this, however. The extension from the original 3,682 square foot house was not filed timely. It was filed 10 days late. However, the planning department took part of the responsibility for it being filed late. They. They understood that there was an issue with this and they admitted that they had some responsibility. So the planning department ignored that. And went ahead and approved it. The city council ignored it and they went ahead and approved the project. It came before the California Coastal Commission and a staff member said, we're going to recommend denial. Because the extension was filed 10 days late. Knowing the coastal commission, the way I do. We withdrew the application and filed a new application for virtually the same house. And that goes to one of the things that council member Pearson mentioned. With that, I'm going to go to a. PowerPoint presentation and you've got it right in front of you. I want you to notice that this project complies with every single development standard. In the city of Malibu. With only one exception, and that's the minor modification. For the side yard setback on the east side. And the reason for that. Is that allows the house to be moved closer to the east, creating a larger view corridor for Mr. Wong. The, can we get the next slide, please? Okay, this is the same slide that was shown by the staff. It's it's clear the entire house. Is in an area that slopes less than less than 3%. Next slide, please. This only verifies the red line to the right. Is at elevation 204. The red line at the left is 202. The distance between them is approximately 75 feet. So it slopes less than two feet for the entire house. I'm sorry, yes, less than two feet. Next slide, please. This slide is the upper level. You can see the garage is actually on the upper level. And it's because the upper level is on the same level as the existing soil, the existing pad. Next slide, please. This is the lower level and it's. Basically the same size as the upper level. So although the project. Is. 3,700 and change. What actually people see. Is roughly 2,000 square feet, which brings it in conformance with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. All right. The west elevation is the upper elevation and it shows exactly what the staff was was showing. The red line at the top is 18 feet above the adjacent soil. This is all the people can see. From from the west. The next. The lower part is the east elevation. And the roof line does not get any higher than 17 feet from the adjacent grade. Next slide, please. This shows a 500 foot radius around the lot. And it includes all the houses within the radius and houses that are within lots that are touched by the radius. Next slide, please. To determine the average size of a house in an area. The staff eliminates the 10% of the larger homes. And 10% of the lower of the smaller homes and averages the 80%. The project. Is 35.9% larger than the average of the 80%, but as I say. Approximately half of the house is put below the surface of the ground, so no one can see it. Next slide, please. This shows Mr. Wong's house to the north. And his view over the top of the existing house. What it doesn't show is the 40% which you can see on the slide. That is left open for him to see the ocean. I think this is one of those cases where no good deed goes unpunished. Next slide, please.
That was seven and a half minutes.
Thank you very much. I'll I'll finish up quickly here. Can we go to the next slide? The next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. This is. A aerial photograph of the entire. a aerial photograph of the entire Big Rock Mesa area, provided by Bing Yin and Associates. The white lines are cross-sections showing slide planes through this area. The important part of this is the orange arrow, which points to Standpipe 33. And that is very, very close. It's, it's next to the existing parcel. Next slide, please. This is a report from Yay and Associates indicating that Standpipe 33 is now, the water table is 245 feet below where the standpipe is located. That, that the verification of that is that it's 35 feet below sea level. It is the lowest water table in the entire Big Rock Mesa.
Norm, that was eight and a half minutes.
All right, thank you. I'll finish up in 30 seconds. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, this shows Standpipe 33. What's important about this is not only is the water table below five of the potential slide planes, only above one. And we are going to be removing 890 cubic yards of dirt. Even if you subtract from the weight of that dirt, the concrete, the grade beams, all of that, including the house, still we're removing between 650 and 700 tons of weight, which is driving force. The bottom line is, this house is going to increase the safety of the adjoining, the surrounding community. It's not going to decrease it. I'm, I'm going to save the rest of my time for rebuttal. We'll be hearing from the project geologist and the project label representative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I, looks to me like we are now at the public comment portion of this hearing.
Yeah, and we have 14 speakers for this item. They are Colin Drummond, Joe Drummond, Georgia Goldfarb, Gerard Eide, Rosemary Eide, Sabrina Zeretti, Don Michael, Jared Cohen, Marina Menbaski, Jimmy Petula, G D Graves, Edward Menaski, Pat Healy, and Raisin Ababi. We'll hear from Colin Drummond first.
Hi, Colin, are you in the room?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. If you would not just quite start the clock yet, I just wanted to let you know that I'll be starting this presentation, and then it'll be continued by my wife, Jo, and then following her, Georgia Goldfarb. So if you could keep the slides up for them. And if you could please go to slide two to, to start the screen. Thank you. You can start. Honorable City Council, as you know, B R M P O A is investigating a new assessment district based on the reports of instability in the area and the aging de-watering equipment. Last week, Lori Berry of Yay and Associates sent an email to the city and B R M P O A stating groundwater levels in the eastern Mesa, which is where this project is proposed, are not as low as they have been in the past after the de-watering system was implemented. No new build that adds water to the hillside is permitted in Big Rock. Slide three, please. The staff report states that the proposed septic system will introduce a flow of 400 gallons per day for three-bedroom, 52 plumbing fixture units. Their current home next door uses six times this amount and nine times more in the last two months. So this is a gross underestimation and will increase the area's groundwater level substantially. Their quality control manual, maintenance manual has no water usage restrictions, which are clearly necessary. Slide four, please. Yay is now monitoring the cracking at the periphery of the landslide. The crack ages have moved slightly since January 2021. With more rain, this could become more severe. The estimated slope stability study for this project was completed by Geo Concepts for a different footprint with only 60 cubic feet of grading over 10 years ago in 2010. Cutting into the mountain to build P C H helped cause the 1983 landslide, where Caltrans was found liable. So how can cutting into the landslide let hillside not cause further landslide activity? The city would then be liable. Slide five. The staff report mistakenly states that there's been no movement recorded on the site. However, S P 33 on the property shows a history of movement for 10 years straight, since 2006, and that's during a drought, when there was increased water usage. There is movement every year in nearby inclinometers. This means Big Rock is close to a 1.0 factor of safety, not 1.5. Slide six. Since the revival of Don Michael's report to the city in 2019, at least 17 out of 23 wells and 1/3 of the hydroiders have been replaced or repaired. We need the city to clarify why this was necessary and happened all of a sudden. Slide seven. The concrete swell below this property, instructed to somehow be used for drainage in the staff report, is in complete disrepair, as well as the other swells in Big Rock, which are supposed to direct water off the head. Rockfall and brush failures below the site, reported annually by Shugro and Bingran, has damaged hydroiders, and this swell, so it is far from stable.
Colin, that's your time.
Thank you.
Jo, are you available?
Yes, can you put it to slide eight, please? Thanks. So this item should be denied is because the TDSF has been miscalculated. There is an active investigation with the Board of Professional Engineers, Land Surveyors, and Geologists of the slope analysis prepared for the applicant. The current slope analysis shows that a majority of the slope is less than 45 degrees. However, 2/3 of the hillside is over 45 degrees or 1:1, as seen in the next slide, nine. If we were generous, we could say that the net lot area was 1/3 of the gross lot area, which means a maximum of 3,390 TDSF is allowed, not the 5,204 TDSF violation of this project. The board found the evidence presented substantial to start an investigation, so this project cannot continue until it is complete. Slide 10, please. Height should be measured from the ground floor story's average finished grade from all perimeter walls, corners, as per city code. This would make the tallest part of the home at over 20 feet, thus blocking protected views per the site plan review. With the 2/3 rule, since the entire ground floor interior area is used for the bottom floor calculation, the height needs to be taken from there, not the areas where the floor is not counted. If you add up everything in TDSF, you'd find the garage wasn't included in the calculation for the top floor, which is over 18 feet if you measure from the bottom floor. Slide 11, please. Which makes the TDSF of the top floor 2,092, which is over the 1535 limit. Slide 12. Almost a perfect square, and therefore does not comply to the 2/3 rule of the LCP. Slide 13. The overhangs over six feet make this overage even more. Slide 14. If the applicant is not measuring height from the finished grade of this lower story, they can include the floor area in the 2/3 calculation. It would be treated like a basement in the first 1,000 square feet, not count, which would keep it in violation when the average finished grade height is being used. Slide 15, please. The proposed project would substantially alter the existing landform along the bluff. By splitting the land with the neighbor, the owner was never going to build on the original footprint, but keep it a green space, so a taking is not necessary. The owner knew he could not build in a landslide area when he purchased the property. If the owner kept the original philanthropic green space property it is now, it would remain safe from the original fire hazard and landslide. Slide 16. The project is not conformed to the LCP. New development proposed on landslides shall be permitted only where a factor of safety 1.5, static and 1.1 pseudostatic can be provided. Neither is provided in a seismic stability study never even completed, as per city and state law. New development shall be prohibited on property where it presents an extraordinary risk to life and property due to an existing or demonstrated potential hazard.
And he measured his.
Landslide area was a factor of safety lower than 1.5, close to unity, presents a great risk. The granting of variance will be detrimental and injurious to the public property and those nearby. It would set a bad precedent to allow build in the cliffside and active landslide of Big Rock. No variance has ever been granted in Big Rock for the factor of safety, so this would be a special privilege to the applicant. And now I think Georgia is going.
Georgia Goldfarb is our next speaker. Georgia, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
If you could put slide 17 up, that would be great. Well, you have it up.
Unmute. Sorry.
You're still muted, Georgia.
Stop. I just unmuted.
Perfect.
Okay, but I, can you give me a second to get my screen back? Because it disappeared with all of this. My goodness. Okay, I'm ready. Slide 17. The proposed project is not the least environmentally damaging. It has 52 fixture units versus many fewer for the previous house. A primary factor affecting groundwater is onsite wastewater effluent. Thus, a one-story home on the original smaller footprint with a lower fixture count is the least environmentally damaging alternative. Further, digging into the untouched landslide debris on the cliffside is hardly the least environmentally damaging. It will harm nearby homes and those of P C H. The staff report fails to consider or analyze this alternative or rain events in a landslide. Next slide, 18. The project is almost 90% bigger than other homes on inland. 5,200 square feet versus 2,800. There are no two-story homes on inland, and none have huge overhangs like this. It violates the C C N R in height, being two stories, and setbacks. Next slide, please, 19. The planning director incorrectly found the project categorically exempt from CEQA. This is incorrect on two counts. Exemptions are inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type, same place, over time is significant. These will certainly affect the stability of the slide. Clearly, second point, the Big Rock landslide creates unusual circumstances. Another reason to deny the exemption. Therefore, the possibility of a significant environmental impact from the project exists. Next slide, please, 20. Categorical exemptions cannot apply. About 125 new additions of almost 130,000 square feet have been approved since 92. Neither analysis of the stability of the Big Rock landslide nor groundwater height in the eastern Mesa have been done since then and must be done prior to this approval. 102 residents have signed a petition seeking a development moratorium. Approval of additional development without stability assessments is a game of Russian roulette, increasing the risk of failure with each approval. Next slide, please, 21. The owner currently has two open code enforcement cases at his house next door and should not be allowed to proceed until these are resolved. So next slide, please, 22. In summary, the project does not follow city's LCP or building code and does not minimize risk. Project does not follow state law because it did not evaluate earthquake risks relative to slope stability. Further, the city improperly found the project categorically exempt from CEQA. And no variance for factor of safety has ever been granted for the Big Rock landslide area. City councils should nullify project approvals. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia.
Our next speaker is Gerard Eide.
Gerard, are you available?
Now you can say it. Yeah, he sits next to me, Gerard. Will you say you give your time?
Yeah, I give my time to my wife.
No, it's to Jo, to Jo.
To Jo. Oh, okay.
Jo?
Jo's already spoken.
No, then he gives the time to me. Hold on, hold on. Maybe a little. No, it's for video. He gives the time for video.
George, we do have a video to present during your time.
Yes.
Now can we ask the project engineer whether his study complied with the requirements of the L I P? What's the section, Richard? What's the section, Richard, the L I P that I'm talking about?
Nine four.
Section 9.4, I believe.
This is the analysis of, of the static condition that you sort of start with in order to be able to come to the conclusion that we don't have a factor of safety equal to 1.5.
I said, we did a, we did a local stability for that, for, for the slope below the, the property, and we took into account these, these items, but we didn't, but we weren't, because it's a landslide, it didn't meet the 1.5.
Okay, but you took in all of these, all of these nine factors you took into account?
Let me just finish looking at what this is.
Because I thought you mentioned in your testimony that you did not do an earthquake study.
We did not do seismic.
Okay, seismic's required.
Not for the variance.
The study is.
Number three says the effects of earthquakes on slope stability may be addressed.
Through pseudostatic slope analysis.
Right.
Not, not, isn't addressed.
In this case, I would recommend you continue it because we're gonna, we only have, you know, four commissioners here, and you know, you give them a chance to bring another commissioner on, bring a chance to bring some of the extra information that you guys have requested here.
If they had gone through that section and done all those studies, then we can grant a variance and enough to ask to follow the code.
But, but a two to one, a two to one would be a denial?
Yes.
We would prefer that you take an action that we can, that we could appeal and go to the city council.
Now can we rehear the same denial or no? We're in the motion for denial.
Why don't we re-vote on that motion?
You, you can.
We need a, we need a new motion, so we need either a motion to approve. You know, we haven't done that yet, or otherwise.
Let's, let's, let's at least fill out the record with that. I'll make a motion to approve the, the staff recommendation.
And I will second it.
Let's vote.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilde?
Abstain.
No, you would need to vote for this one. See if there's, if there's a chance to have the motion. If, if Commissioner Marks or Chair Mazza abstain, then the motion would carry. Or it could be a two-two, and then you can.
Got you. I will retract my vote and vote yes.
All righty. Vice Chair Marks?
I will grant abstain.
I'll vote no. So.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
That was three minutes, and our next speaker is Rosemary Eide.
Yeah, my name is. Oh, hold on.
We can hear you, Rose. Oh, Rosemary, you just were muted. We should have a pop-up now asking you to unmute.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Rosemary Eide. I've lived on Big Rock for over four and a half decades. As you heard and saw in the video, the applicant's geologist Mark admits he did not do the seismic slope stability analysis that is required by state law and by Malibu code, L I P section 9.4, number three. And they show the actual section of the L I P section 9.4 on the Zoom screen. And since there was a two-to-two vote tie, it would go to a continuance as recommended by the city attorney. John Maslow then says that they had the applicant's geologist gone through the L I P section, and then all of the studies required, then the commission could grant a variance. But he states that the applicant's geologist did not follow the code. So it shouldn't have been obvious at that point that the project should be denied and no variance granted for not following the code. In discussion with the applicant's attorney, they create a new motion with the assisted senior attorney. And even through the applicant team is prepared for denial, the attorney and Jeff Jennings seeming to influence the vote to pass the resolution. The motion carries, and the project is approved, and the variance is granted. This is despite knowing that the project violates both state law and Malibu code, L I P section 9.4. There were a number of folks on the Zoom that wondered how this could happen. So we have, we hope you can fix this mistake. The city of Malibu needs to follow the law. As you know, the landslide goes back to the early 80s. And it started because the lower Big Rock had a drainage company. It was just run by the homeowners on the lower mesa and they didn't want to continue putting money into it. And so the last, then we didn't have, no, 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 so I'm sorry. Okay, now the last few years, we did not have a lot of rain, but the weather will change and we will have wet winters again and most likely very shortly. And the dewatering system needs to be working better. The pump on our street is hardly pumping even though the groundwater is high. We have no seepage in our neighborhood. No new projects can occur that will exacerbate these issues and I invite the city council members to visit us. The perch conditions need to be addressed. Some of you might remember what happens during those very rainy wet winters. We cannot change that, but you, the representatives of the city, have the duty to follow the existing laws on the books.
Rosemary, that's your time.
I'm so sorry.
Our next speaker is Sabrina Zaretti.
Sabrina, are you available?
Yes, hi, good evening, Honorable City Council. I'm Sabrina, I live below the project site on PCH. The coastal development permit is mistaken and the views are not impacted by additional height to twenty-four feet. This will reduce nearby home values by at least one million, losing these views that should be measured from the finished grade of the property, making it over two feet too high for the site plan review. The TDSF of the property is also ninety percent larger than the average homes on inland lane and therefore goes against neighborhood character. The mutual CCNRs, which represent neighborhood character, all limit roof heights to fifteen feet and setbacks from the rear bluff property line to be at least fifteen feet. No house on Big Rock has ever been built in the cliffside on bluffs like the applicant's homes because of our safety should be paramount. No variance for factor of safety has been issued by any build on Big Rock active landslide. The stability of all our homes nearby on PCH would be impacted negatively as a safety factor would go down with additional mass and volume of water from the new septic system into the ground, which would reduce the stability further and negatively impact the environment. The owner already uses way too much water. This will cause saturation in the slope, which could then easily fail and cause huge damage with more than just cracking, but serious damage to our adjacent properties. Please do not approve this project for these reasons and for the reasons all the other speakers in opposition have brought up tonight. All our home values are at stake here. Addition, I'd like to add, this is Malibu. Is it worth the price of a landslide to make one person happy? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Our next speaker is Don Michael.
Hi, Don, are you available?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
All right. A little background. About a year ago, I happened to be working on inland lane, looking at other job. And I noticed a series of concentric fractures in the cul-de-sac, which led me to the conclusion that an incipient, an incipient landslide now underlies the inland cul-de-sac as well as the area downstream to the south. I didn't know anyone having to do with the development you're talking about now. Didn't know Dr. Wong. In fact, I've only spoken to him once since that time. Haven't spoken to Don Kobereski at all on the project. But I did write a letter to the Malibu City Council based on my concern as a registered geologist with regard to the safety factor or the safety of the public generally under Building and Professions Code, Section seventy-eight, one oh-point-one. That letter went to the city council on September twelfth, two thousand. That was my only connection with this project. I didn't hear back for several months. I finally contacted, at the time, I guess was Mayor Mike Pearson and mentioned it to him. He did respond and say that he would look into it and that's the last I heard of that. The fact is that I observed a series of concentric cracks in the cul-de-sac of inland lane, which can only be reasonably explained as a result of incipient movement along the crown of a landslide, which now underlies the cul-de-sac itself as well as properties downstream to the south and at least part of the property that's now the subject of discussion. That's really all I have to say. Except that I did look at the GeoConcept Report of December twenty, two thousand and eleven, which presumably supports the idea that the property is safe. This is supplemental report number three. And the report simply doesn't take into account the inland cul-de-sac area. At the time, maybe the fractures weren't visible, but they certainly were when I looked at them in two thousand and twenty. Roads have since been paved, those fractures are now covered, but I wouldn't be surprised that they're starting to develop again.
Don, that's your time.
Yeah, any questions, I would gladly try and answer.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
Our next speaker would be Jared Cohen, but I don't see him in the meeting right now, so we'll try circling back and we'll hear from Marina Menavsky.
Hi Marina, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, everyone. I am concerned that great injustice taking place in our Big Rock Mesa neighborhood. Joe Drummond and Mr. Haag Wong trying to prevent honest homeowners with a properly obtained permits from building their dream homes. The reason is happening that home will partially impeach the views. They're using words like landslides, fire hazards and all those key things. And as you can see, they're very well organized to prevent us from building some additions to our houses. So I'm very concerned about this. And actually, when we were building our private road on inland and repairing it, Haag paid zero toward this project. He didn't want to participate. So his concern about safety of neighborhood or well-being of neighborhood, completely nonsense. He doesn't care. All he cares about is view. That's all I have to say. Plus, building house on a lot existing already in that place, there was existing house in ninety-four. It will improve safety. We all know there is a house built on a lot, it's safer. And it was existing house back in ninety-four. It's just unfair to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marina.
Our next speaker would be Jimmy Petula, but it looks like he may have left the meeting for the moment, so we'll hear from Jimmy Gray.
Okay. Do we have anybody else?
DeeDee, you should have a pop-up asking you to unmute.
I'm here, thank you. Honorable City Council members, my name is DeeDee Graves and I live at two oh-two-two-four Pacific Coast Highway, right below the Big Rock Mesa. My family lived in our home in nineteen eighty-four when the slide occurred. It was a horrific experience. And the toe of the slide came next to our house and pushed out the house next door so that it is no longer there. The planning commission and city council have consistently approved variances that should not be given. The factor of safety is a no-brainer, given our community and the geological makeup of Malibu. Codes were researched and approved in the past to keep safety in our community. Any changes on the mesa are going to affect Pacific Coast Highway and the homes under the mesa. And these things should really be considered by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Our next speaker will be Edward Menavsky.
Edward, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Edward Menavsky. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. My wife spoke a few minutes ago and the view is the main concern here. You, please take this into consideration. You know, you're intelligent people and you have the laws in front of you. There's really a big misjustice being done because some people need to have a few more inches of view and they are using all kinds of words and all kinds of terminology, which is just not correct. Now, if there is a valid point and the geology is bad, I agree. They shouldn't be built. But the geology is good, it's solid. We are neighbors, we live on the same side as the applicant and we live literally a door, one door down from him. And we had a geological report in two thousand and eleven and there was another one in two thousand and nineteen, a deep geological report. And it showed that the property is stable. There's not going to be a problem. But again, you guys have it all on your side, but don't let them influence your judgment or decision because they want a little bit more view. And like my wife said, Haag has not participated in anything we have done. We have tried to improve inland lane many times and Haag opposes every little improvement that we try to do on inland lane because he just doesn't want to pay for it. He could care less about safety. He just wants his little piece of view. That's all. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward.
Our next speaker is Pat Healy.
Hi, Pat, are you available?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, council. Speaking for the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth. And Slow Growth finds it most disturbing that the city is regularly recommending and granting variances to reduce the established LCP one-point-five static factor of safety throughout the city, including the Big Rock area. The variance request supported by staff for this project before you is particularly egregious. The proposed residence is not set back from the edge of the bluff but built into it with a portion of the residence actually overhanging the bluff above PCH. To our knowledge, this has never been allowed before. It should not be allowed now or in the future. It's foolhardy to build to the edge of and into a bluff face without any setbacks. It's especially dangerous since this project's site doesn't meet the geological safety factor of one-point-five. And for Hugo documented rock fall and bluff failure occurring above PCH adjacent to this location, resulting in the hydrology and other dewatering equipment below it being damaged. All the other residents on inland are setback from the bluff, which is only sensible and the setback, and they are setback for a good reason. Going forward, going more forward of the inland bluff setback should not be allowed. Furthermore, the studies for this property are ten years old and outdated and are for a one-story smaller residence setback from the bluff. Since conditions have changed since then, before anything is constructed on the property, updated studies have to be made. Please deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Our next speaker is Reza Nabavi and then we'll try to circle back to the people we missed earlier.
Thank you. Is Reza available?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone, City Malibu staff, council members. Appreciate your time as always. I'm Reza Nabavi. My family and I are proud Big Rock residents. We actually live one street up from the applicant. And I just want to say I support John and his project. It seems pretty clear to me that, you know, he's going to make the community here more safe. Pretty sure he wouldn't want to live in a home that's less safe. And, you know, a lot of the things he's introducing are things that I frankly wish a lot of the neighbors would actually implement to make Big Rock safer. If there's such concerns about safety, then I think you need to be proactive as opposed to coming after people under false pretenses. You know, at some point, I think the city needs to see that. Hopefully, they will trust its staff, its geotech engineers and whatever findings that result from all of the hard work and research of your team over there. I think it's irrational to block all development and remodels in the Big Rock area like John's. But that's exactly what the opposition wants. My concern, partly, you know, there's, you know, there's this issue of decreasing prices and real estate values. But more importantly, I think, again, just to the realization that this is propaganda based on handful of residents who want to protect their views and have admitted so. At least the neighbor across the street from me has to me with my project. And then all this other stuff is just no ways and delays and delays to try to, you know, to try to delay this until, you know, people like John get frustrated and just give up. And so, you know, property values is on one hand, but, you know, the sense of justice that someone brought up earlier, I think, really needs to be considered. You know, it's just not fair, right? It's not just when things that get approved. You know, I had a, my project on Pietra Chica got approved over two years ago by the planning commission. And my neighbor across the street appealed the decision and we've been waiting ever since to be heard. Meanwhile, they've built illegally, expanded without permits and, you know, maximized profits from their Airbnb business. Yet people like John or myself were trying to do everything the right way through proper channels and permitting, get penalized. Any outside observer looking at this would think this is criminal. I mean, really, I mean, at some point, we gotta just look at what's happening and allow people their right to build when they're doing the right thing and getting all the proper approvals from the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reza.
We do have Jimmy Petula in the meeting now, so we can circle back to him.
Thank you. Jimmy, are you available?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have a nice neighborhood up here at Big Rock and I think there's been a lot of drama the last couple of years with, you know, concerning of us falling into the ocean. And if you talk to any engineer or geologist and if you really, if you really look house to house, I think the problem we have here is not people wanting to build, it's people not collecting their water properly. You know, we're supposed to have, the people that are on the bluffs are supposed to have, you know, a pipe going down, the water going down to PCH to the storm drains or the storm drains here. And if you look, I mean, I hike Big Rock every morning and if you look at people's pipes, they're all broken. There's no, you know, people aren't, I think that the concern should be everybody keeping up with their water and keeping up where their water goes. If everyone's really concerned about Big Rock falling into the ocean, they should concern themselves with that. And we have a lot of people that don't take care of their water. They don't take care of their, you know, and we're concerned about fires and they don't take care of their yards as well in terms of cleanup. But the water is the issue and to have it be where people can't build, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. You buy a lot, you spend millions of dollars to build it and you're trying to, you know, accommodate and then you're not, you're not allowed to build on it. It just doesn't seem to make sense. So I think it's, the concern should not be the building aspect. The concern should be people really being, you know, taking care of their water and taking care of their properties. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else?
I still don't see Jared Cohen in the meeting, so that concludes public comment and we can circle back to Mr. Wong for his rebuttal.
Okay. Dr. Wong, are you available? Dr. Wong, are you available?
Yeah, but it's Don Skolowski. He has had, he has, yeah, let's see if I, Don, not me. Get to Don. Yeah, thank you.
This is, this is Don Kovaleski. I'm sorry, something happened to my computer and I guess I lost some of what I was saying. The main thing I want to make the point is you have a variance that may be allowable from a planning standpoint, but you do not have a variance from the building code. And the building code very clearly states when you can and cannot do building permits within a landslide and a new habitable structure is not allowable. And even this work that would have been proposed as a fire replacement doesn't meet any of the requirements. The structure is damaged more than 10 years ago. The applicant is not the owner, error-authorized representative of the owner. The proposed structure exceeds the area and the load of the original structure. Therefore, the code section allowing for a variance or change to restriction doesn't apply. And the main thing that you need to keep in mind is these people have not conformed with the state requirement to do a seismic analysis of the stability of the landslide and a city requirement to determine how much displacement will occur as a result of an earthquake. If they haven't done it, you can't approve it or you're in violation of both state and your own personal codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. You have a minute forty-eight left.
I'm good, Paul. That's it.
All right.
And now we can go to Norm and see how he wants to handle rebuttal time. I think he might have had a few speakers.
I will. Well, I'm going to have Fred respond, but just before that, let me just say that the way in which the county established the size of houses, they didn't count the garages, they didn't count the overhangs, they didn't count many of the things. As I indicated, this house is only 35.6% larger than the average. And many of these houses were built in the late 60s. With regard to the survey, the survey was done properly. I'm sorry that Ms. Drummond doesn't know how to read a topography map, but it is accurate. Fred, are you available?
Yes, if you can stop the clock. John Cogden, the owner, would like to speak for one minute.
Okay. John, are you available?
Hello. Yes, I'm here. They just let me unmute. You can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time today and people listening to what I have to say. I really don't want to take too much time because I want Fred to be able to talk. But I've been at this per, trying to build a house on a lot zone of residential for over seven years now. I have literally followed what I was told to do by the city every step of the way. Made suggestions that I thought would be improvements for neighbors, improvements for view corridors, make it better for people in the area. Asked specifically if it would be better for the hillside if we remove soil and went down to review, to preserve view corridors and if it would reduce risk. And was told it did, especially if we built the house in certain ways. And I've done that. At every turn, I've gotten resistance, which I now know was really quite selfish in its origin. It's just been difficult for me to even fathom, you know, the stories being told about me that like I'm some sort of horrible person.
John, that was one minute.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just very frustrated. We're trying to follow the rules and get this done. I'm going to pass my time to Fred Gaines. But I truly have tried to do everything I could to do this right.
Thank you. Fred, are you available?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. Fred Gaines with the office of Gaines and Stacy. On behalf of the applicant, we ask that you deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the planning commission, which is consistent, the exact same findings for the exact same variance, a variance to allow an exception from the 1.5 rule that was found by the city in 2012. That was, that was found by the city again in 2019, 2018. Nothing has changed from those times, other than a campaign to stop this owner from building anything. The answer that you were being asked, the question you were being asked to answer is can, or is this person allowed to build anything on their property? Because the only variance they're asking for is variance that allows them to do anything on their property. And that's to build something under the 1.5. And if your answer is either no, you can't do anything in this property. Why? The neighbors who all have homes on these properties, who wouldn't be able to build them today under the rule they're asking you to apply, don't want it. We've gone to the neighbors. We've said, can we do something with the house? Can we make it smaller? Can we turn it this way? Their answer is, we don't want anything. Not one, not the appellant and others, not one has said, move it an inch this way, do something different with the home. And that is where the city starts to get into a problem with the legality of a taking. And your own staff has told you that, that unless a variance is granted from the 1.5 rule, you will be denying any use of the property. And that's where the city starts to run into that. And we've done, given you more detailed analysis on that. The second argument that they're making is that everybody should do an EIR. They should do an EIR on this house. So you have to decide, are we going to do this to everybody? We're going to make everybody that comes in with a house project have to go through a full Sequo EIR? And the law is that you don't have to do that, that they're talking about, we're getting a special privilege for the variance. We're not getting a special privilege for variance. We're asking for the same privilege that everyone else has. And we have to have the variance in order to have be treated the same as everyone else in Big Rock. And that is, that's really the rule that is in front of you. Are you gonna, are you gonna say, no, you can't do anything to people who can't meet this 1.5 rule? And are you going to say, hey, let's make everyone go through an EIR on a case that's already gone for years and years? We've had six continuances on this case with late hits coming in, new information, and we've stopped and gone back and studied it. All of these issues, the seismic issue, the building code issue, have all been reviewed by your staff, asked them. But the last continuance on this case was to answer questions brought up the day of the hearing on these exact issues. The good news is they've run out of new issues.
Fred, that's your time.
And these questions have been answered. And it is time for the council to act and to act consistently and with how they've acted in the past and with the staff recommendation and the planning commission approval in front of you. And we ask that you do that tonight. We are here with any questions. Our geologist is available, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Fred.
And we'll answer any questions you have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you. Okay, I think that brings it to council discussion. Who'd like to lead off? Well, I'll start. Now, Bruce, you're first.
Paul, please, you go first. I'll go second.
Okay, I just wanted to ask Norm a couple of questions, to make sure I heard him correctly. Norm, are you available to answer questions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. For starters, what was the weight of the earth that's going to be removed and the weight of the house that is going to be built again, please?
The total amount of the weight of the dirt, estimated at 100 pounds per cubic foot, is approximately 1,200 tons of weight. The house weighs-
1,200 tons?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 1,200,000 tons.
Okay, 1,200,000 tons.
The house weighs in with the foundation. There's a difference in the weight of concrete. Concrete weighs 150 pounds per cubic foot. If you do all the math, including the house itself, that comes in at approximately 500 tons. So 700 tons net-net weight will be removed from the driving force that participates in what causes landslide.
So we're taking away 700 tons of weight when this thing is done, correct?
That's correct. Well, between 650 and 700. I leave myself 50,000 or 500 tons because it's, you know, sometimes the weight of soil doesn't weigh quite as much as 100 pounds and-
It's lighter than what was there before.
A lot, a lot, yes.
All right. And then the other thing that you said that I'd like you to, you said the standpipe, we've heard people talking about perched water and all of that. And you're saying that there's a standpipe that's on the property or on the neighboring property that the, the level of the water in it is approximately 35 feet below sea level?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
It's the lowest, it's the lowest water table in the entire Big Rock Mesa.
Okay. And is there a, is there a pump at the bottom of that standpipe or somewhere else in the neighborhood that's keeping it there?
I assume that there is a pump close by that is taking water out, but it's not on this property. And it's not on any of the adjacent properties.
Okay. And the other question I had, the home that was originally there that burnt in 93, was that house damaged by the Big Rock slide? To anybody's knowledge?
My understanding is that it was not damaged by the Big Rock slide. It just burned on the ground.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn the, I'm going to turn the floor over to Bruce.
Thanks, Paul. All right, so, you know, the recording that was put up by, I think it was Rosemary or her husband. I watched that hearing and I was very, impressed would be the opposite of the right word. But, I mean, when that occurred, it floored me. Because what happened was the deputy city attorney engineered an approval when it was clear that there was about to be a denial. And it really shouldn't matter because this is a de novo appeal. And we decide this as if there's no decision below. But it was engineered when one of the two pro applicant commissioners was about, was going to abstain. It would have been a 2-1 vote not to grant it. Then they would have voted the same again and it would have been the same abstention again and it would have been denied. And we'd be up here on an appeal by the property owner, which is a different complexion, given the way our staff analyzes appeals, because they put the burden, for some reason, on the appellant, even though it's a de novo appeal. And that's evident throughout the staff reports, which talk about not presenting new evidence and substantial evidence supporting the decision made below, both of which are completely irrelevant in a de novo appeal. So the city attorney engineered an approval. And now we are here looking at this. Now, ED, Mr. Michaels has forgotten more than most others in this field ever knew to begin with. His remaining expertise but is beyond reproach, and he's got no axe to grind here. His sole interest is in helping to protect the safety of our residents in unstable area that already has caused major damage and which could easily bring about catastrophic consequences if not treated with the respective commands. By the way, due to Mr. Michaels' age, I certainly hope that his knowledge is being downloaded to a junior associate because he's got invaluable institutional knowledge of this area, which future city councils can benefit from. But in any event, he says there's an incipient landslide underlying inland lane. Series of concentric cracks. He says the only reasonable explanation is that there's an incipient movement of a landslide in the cul-de-sac, including this property. That's substantial evidence from an expert witness if I've ever heard it. Substantial evidence doesn't mean evidence that persuades. Substantial evidence means a prima facie case, enough to get somebody to the hurdle where you have to decide whether they're persuasive or not persuasive. There's substantial evidence here of an active landslide. Not only the active landslide, the large active landslide, but substantial evidence that there's a landslide in this cul-de-sac and a landslide on this property, active. Now, I don't think we should ever get to the question tonight of approving this variance or approving this project. Obviously, I think we should, I think we should get to the point of denying it today, but not because of the merits. Because as Rosemary stated, I think completely correctly, there are two reasons under Sequo why an initial study is required. Not an EIR full-blown that may come, but in an initial study. There's an active landslide. This is unprecedented development in terms of its specific location on the bluff. This is the only one. It's new construction larger than the property that was, than the dwelling that was there before. It does not meet the factor of safety. And there's no current study. By the way, the studies that are being relied on were for a prior project, which we keep being told is materially the same. No, it's not. It's a quarter smaller. But it's, but in any event, I've been told in the past that even when you apply to do a project and then you never get it done in time, and four years later you go and ask for permission to do the same project because you didn't get it done in time, you got to produce new studies. You can't rely on the studies that were provided to the city four years earlier. Well, here, a different project had studies. And we're being asked to rely on 10-year-old studies from a different project to support a project today. So cumulative effect, the way the sequel works, as I understand it, is there are these categorical exemptions that apply in the first instance. There's no question this is a categorical exemption in the first instance. It's the house. It's a house where there's been a house before. It's a house in a development where there are housels. But there are exceptions to that categorical exemption. And if those exceptions apply, you've got to do an initial study. And there's two exceptions that have been advocated, cumulative effect and unusual circumstance. And they both apply here. Cumulative effect doesn't mean this is not going to be the stick that breaks the camel's back. That's not what cumulative effect means. That's the way it was analyzed, though, by the staff. Cumulative effect means if you consider everything that's gone before, if you consider what's going on now, and if you consider what's likely to continue to go on into the future, we need to understand more. That's cumulative effect. And that's not been done here. And by the way, the same place doesn't mean this property. The same place means the active landslide area. And we've got two here. We've got the large active landslide area, which nobody disputes. The staff report says repeatedly it exists and it's active, not just potential, active. And we've got expert testimony from an expert whose qualifications are undisputable saying active landslide specifically here on this product, on this property. I don't know how you could possibly say we don't need to be concerned about potential cumulative effect such that we don't even do a study. Unusual circumstances. How could it get any more unusual? I mean, I've already gone through the litany of specific facts that are present here that are unprecedented. And no one's been given a variance from the factor of safety. Before we do that, we should know from at least a study that this can be done safely. And Mr. Kovaleski, who's expertise also is beyond reproach, although he's hired by somebody, but, you know, Mr. Michael was even hired by somebody here. But he's hired by somebody, but that's never been a reason not to trust the experts of the applicant. So it shouldn't be a reason not to trust the expert of the appellant. He's got expertise. He says that there have been, that there are studies required by law, and I hear him and I think he's right, that haven't been done here. Forget the initial study. There are studies required by the building code, not done here. Now, there have been aspersions cast about the motives of Mr. Wong, the Drummonds, and the 100 other people who've signed a petition. They're all supposedly just looking out for their view. Now, I think one of the parties that's saying that was the one that got the benefit of the easement. Now, I, I think one of the parties that's saying that was the one that got the benefit of the easement, but I, I could be wrong about that. Another one says he's got problems with his project and people are complaining about it, and he's sick and tired and wants to just get his project done. If I, if I'm gonna be looking for motives, I think they're there very clear. But you know what? The motives don't matter. The facts are what matters. And the facts are, this is a dangerous place, and we don't even have an initial study under Sequel. Um, I've got a lot more, but you know, th- this is as de novo as it gets. At best, it was, it was a two-two tie. Let's not fool ourselves to say it was a two-one-zero. Uh, Chris Marks admirably, after the, the deputy attorney engineered a, a, a yes vote for a grant, which was going to be an abstention, he admirably abstained to allow a yes vote. Okay, but this was not a two-one-zero. This is a two-two tie. It shouldn't even be here because it's a two-two tie, but it's here, and this is de novo, and we are looking at it with fresh eyes. And there are problems here. I haven't even touched upon the reasons why the actual variance is improper if you get past the study, but I, I can't get past needing an initial study. I really can't. So, um, I'm, I'd like to hear the argument for why I'm wrong. But I've asked a lot of questions of the city attorney offline. Um, but I asked if there's ever been a case with facts like this where a court has said an initial study was wrongfully requested. Answer is there's no such case. Oh, and as far as the taking argument, there can't be a taking if all we're doing is asking for information required by state law. The taking issue doesn't even become ripe until after that information is produced, and we then decide whether to permit this to go forward, which we very well may, depending on what the information is, or if we deny it then. And if we deny it then, then an argument about a taking becomes ripe. But right now, there's no issue of, of taking if all we do is require an initial study, which is required by state law. So with that, I will, um, yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Who would like to speak next? Mikey, I see your hand.
Someone had to go, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're just grateful you came back.
Also, you'd have a two-two, wouldn't that be fun? Um. My first question is very simple. Does state law require we do a seismic analysis in order to approve this property?
Uh, that's a great question for, uh, Lauren Doyle, who's, um, here. Uh, she's the city geotechnical staff and she would answer this question.
Thank you.
Hi, I just unmuted myself.
You're doing a great job.
Thanks. I'm also going to, uh, have Mike Phipps weigh in on this. Uh, Mike Phipps is here as well, and so is Christine. Um, I believe the state law that Don Kowaleski is referring to is the Seismic Hazard Mapping Act. And we addressed in, I think we may have addressed this in our, uh, February presentation to city council. And we've also addressed it, I think, in other hearings. The State Seismic Hazard Mapping Act does not apply to single properties. The requirement is for subdivisions of four parcels or more.
Does our own.
Yeah, so I'm going to, pardon?
Does our own codes require that there's a seismic safety?
For properties, for, for new construction. And, and there has been some change, which I will defer to planning, and we've been in discussions with planning, um, uh, because there, I, I will say this. When everybody says that there's never been a factor of safety variance granted on Big Rock Mesa before, that's because none has been required for the type of development or projects that have been approved up there. Now, the planning definition of land development, uh, we've been instructed to use a, uh, a broader definition of land development. So to say that that hasn't happened before isn't, to, to me, it's because it hasn't been required before for, for the types of development that, that have been put there. But, um, with respect to our own code and the seismic hazard, um, for new development, wha- what we used to consider new habitable development, right? Um, uh, that's more than fifty percent. Uh, we would require a seismic hazard, uh, slope stability analysis, um. Uh, and that's part of the, that's part of the guidelines. Right? And that's part of the reason why you don't see new homes on landslides unless they either stabilize the slide or unless it's a special circumstance like a fire rebuild. And I'm gonna ask Mike to weigh in here and, uh, add anything that I may have missed. Did I answer your question?
Um, you, you caused a couple more to appear in my head, but, um, I, I think, I, I still want to get, I do want to hear more about when people said no home has ever been approved in that area uh, with this kind of variance, and I did not quite understand the details of your answer on that. It sounds like they've changed terms or something along the way. I wasn't quite sure.
That's something, I, I'll, I will allow planning that there's, um, the, the differences between, um, prior, for example, if there was a pool, for example, right? Uh, a, a factor of safety of, we didn't require a variance for a pool. There have been number of pools built up on Big Rock Mesa that have not required variances uh, for the factor of safety. And Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's right. Uh, but I believe now, moving forward, that, that will change. But I, I would, anyway, I'm just gonna stop there. Did I clear, did I clear that up?
Yeah, that helped a lot, actually. That helped a lot. Have other homes been built up there though that had no problem? Were they outside the slide area or, or?
Well, I, you know, I'm gonna let Chris Dean weigh in here because, um, I, I think he knows of some, some homes that have been built on some slides, but I don't believe a new home that wasn't a fire rebuild that wasn't a fire rebuild and entitled under the natural disaster, um, code of the state. I don't believe a new home has been built up within the active slide area on Big Rock Mesa.
Well, this is, this is. Hi, everybody. Um, that's, that's correct, Lauren. Um. Uh, the only new home that has been built up in Big Rock and, and Mike and I have been working at the city as I've used since the early nineties. And we did all the fire rebuild reviews with the nineteen ninety-three firestorm, the, the Panga Firestorm. So those homes were built under a separate set of guidelines that were approved by the city council back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, we have proved a few homes, new homes with the same type of variance up in the Los Flores Eagle Pass landslide a little further to the west. And under the same type of conditions of approval with the quality control maintenance manual, um, they had to sign the assumption of risk as part of the variance as we do on this project. Um, but to my knowledge, we haven't looked and approved and reviewed any other variances on Big Rock except for this one to date. Okay, thank you. Um, I got a couple more questions here before I let someone else have a turn. So one speaker mentioned there's an investigation having to do with the TDSF of this house. Can somebody clarify what investigation's going on about that?
Not sure if it's an investigation, but there is a dispute in the, uh, survey. And so, um, what, um, what has been, uh, stated is that, uh, there is more of the one-on-one slope than what is shown on the color-coded slope analysis that was, uh, provided to, uh, planning and as a result, um, a- as you would exclude one-to-one slopes and road easements from the gross lot area for calculating total development square footage, the maximum total square footage would we reduce as a result of that? Um, we don't have a competing survey or any other information that would, uh, contest the information that has been provided by the applicant, and the applicant has provided a signed and, uh, and stamped, uh, survey by, uh, a land surveyor, um, a licensed land surveyor, and that was presented to us. And, uh, the color-coded slope analysis was also, uh, signed and stamped by a land surveyor.
Could, while you're at it, could you address, one of the speakers brought up that this was a neighborhood character issue? But this doesn't fall under neighborhood characters, I understand it, correct?
Well, the application is requesting for a cyclone review, any, any minor modification. So, uh, the findings for, uh, neighborhood character is one that would have to be made, uh, for this project. But as stated before, and I know, uh, the, the comment was made that, uh, the majority of houses on the, uh, south side of inland lane are single stories, and this is a two-story house. But in appearance from the road, this will also be a one-story house. The second story is actually, uh, below grade. And as a result, that it is a two-story house, uh, it is a much smaller footprint that would actually, uh, cover the, the lot. So the original house, and I think it was stated that this is a larger footprint than the house that was uh, originally approved on the property, and that's not the case. Uh, it, the original house had a much larger footprint. It was a single-story house. Uh, the fact is, uh, this is a smaller footprint only because, uh, they're building a two-story house, uh, with, uh, equal, you know, size on the bottom floor as they are proposing on the upper floor.
Right, which just for people listening, who I know are all, you know, very involved in this issue. It's really, really common overall in Malibu now that people are trying to maximize the size of what they can build on their lot because it's so damn hard and expensive to build in Malibu. So we have effectively with our rules to limit development created situation where only rich people can build in Malibu, in my opinion. So, uh, thus people maximize their lots be, to get a return. Little bit of my look at how I think about that, but that's one way I look at it. Um. Hang on one sec. I, I do, I do want to make a comment that I was really, really glad to hear from, uh, Colin Drummond. That, and I hadn't heard this yet, maybe I missed it, that a new assessment district is sounds like in some sort of stage of formation of being built, or being, uh, started. I, I hope that's true because it's been, and I've said it in public several times, it's getting water. I mean, when, when the city spent a lot of time doing our studies, the first three recommendations they had to do with how people with existing homes could lessen the impact of the water come from their house. And I haven't seen any action on that at all. And so to go down to the fourth item on the list, which is stopping development, feels a little inauthentic when the first three haven't been done. So I think it's fantastic that that's true, and I know it's difficult. And I know it, it's expensive. Um, I read the letter Craig Hill resubmitted, which I appreciate, on the, um, geologists and other experts he got together for a meeting. And every one of them just talks about different actions that can be taken in Big Rock, um, related. And at least I say stop development. And, um, that's not even mentioned here. So I, I applaud the neighborhood for moving forward on that. I think it, it's a difficult step and it's long past due. Um, so, um, however, I can help with that absolutely well. And with that, I'll stop for now so that people can ask questions.
Steve hasn't been recognized yet, and his hand is raised.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I I'm basically focused on making sure that we're taking care of the safety of our community, alright? So, and I'll get to more of that later, but, but people keep bringing up a fire rebuild. Tell me how this is a fire rebuild.
It's not.
Right, so, so let me go, okay, it's not. So it's a brand-new house, right?
It is a brand-new house, correct.
Then, then we're supposed to be doing the seismic thing that the lady spoke about. It's in the code. Right?
Let's, let's, let's ask the geotechnical staff about questions about geology, but, uh, as far as planning is concerned, uh, we're treating this as a completely new house. Uh, and the house was designed and, and, uh, compared to new standards.
And I think Lauren Doyle said that if it's a brand-new house, your, our code says you've got to do the seismic study. And I don't see a seismic study. And, and look, whether we should build a house or shouldn't build a house, I don't think, I, I don't have enough information to make that decision. I think we, that we should be tight. It, it, it's sort of like, in, in the last meeting, we had a Lyndon Gibbs uh, was commenting on another topic, alright? And she, and she says, what's really disappointing is the residents come in and ask the city for something. And the city says, yeah, we'll help you out, and it doesn't happen. And they gotta come back and ask again, and they gotta come back and ask again, and they gotta come back and ask again. And, and that's wrong. I mean, I think the residents of Big Rock have come up a number of times to said, do the studies, let us know what the heck is going on up there, and we haven't done that. So, you know, just if I, I'll go, go with you more later on, but this fighter rebuilt argument some other people have made doesn't exist. The code says it's a brand-new house, we're gonna do the seismic study. We didn't do that. I don't know how you can approve this house. Paul, I'll go back, I got more later on, but let's go with that.
Thank you, Steve. Karen, you have a chance, or I'll go back to Bruce?
Uh, Bruce, go ahead. I'll speak after you.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. I actually just had some questions that were triggered by what Mikey asked. And, and by the way, I misspoke before when I said it was Rosemary that made the point about Sequel, it was Georgia. Um, Cr- Christine, I have a question. I, I heard that there's not been any variance granted for a new construction where the factor of safety is not met in Big Rock. Um, but there was mention of that having occurred in another landslide area. My question is, in that other landslide area, was that an active landslide at the time the variance was granted?
Uh, yes, Bruce. Hi, this is Chris speaking. Um, yes, it is an active landslide. Even more active, uh, with more surface expression of, uh, distress than Big Rock Mesa. Um, just for example, there, it's, it's a complex landslide of several different lobes, different sections, I guess you'd call them. And I think in ninety-five or ninety-eight, when we had the one El Nino rain year, where I think Malibu recorded like thirty-five inches of rain, the southernmost lobe of that landslide dropped eight feet in a month or so, and we had to rebuild, the city, excuse me, had to rebuild uh, uh, that section of the road by putting a policy-supported bridge across it, which stands to today. But yes, it, it's a volatile landslide, even more so than Big Rock. And, um, they did meet all the requirements for the variance and, and met the intent of the code in that regard.
And, and, and by way of follow-up on that, was, was the variance granted for a construction on the bluff?
No, it is not a bluff landslide. It's a canyon-bailing landslide.
Okay, um, the other question that was, um, that, that, this wasn't because of Mikey, but I'd forgotten to ask this before. Um, Paul asked questions about the difference in, this isn't for, um, for Chris, by the way, it's for anyone who would have the answer. Um, Paul asked questions about the difference in the weight. And, you know, I, I'm not an expert. It, it's, it sounds like common sense that less weight is better than more weight in a landslide, but I don't know geologically whether that's actually accurate. For all I know, disturbing the compact prop, the compact ground taking out one-point-two million pounds, tons. Taking out one-point-two million pounds, tons of dirt, and then building something in that place makes it more dangerous, I just don't have. The knowledge one way or the other, that sounds like pseudoscience type, it's lighter, so therefore it's safer. Can somebody that's an expert in that area answer whether lighter necessarily means safer?
So, I, I made that statement in the last staff report that was published for this item, uh, and it was after uh consulting with uh Lauren and Mike Phipps. Um, so, maybe we can have them uh just confirm that.
Th- this is Chris, uh, Bruce, I can answer your question about the, the weight question you had. If you remove weight on a landslide and reduce the amount of driving force on a landslide, you are. Providing. Well, I wouldn't say you're increasing the factor of safety, but you're. I guess you are because you're reducing the driving force, and factor of safety is the sum of the resisting forces over the driving forces. So. That increases your factor of safety by reducing the weight.
Ne- necessarily in all circumstances?
Yes, that's a, that's fundamental for slope stability and what a factor of safety means, yes.
Okay.
Right, that's, I would just like to qualify that, though, that's assuming that all other factors stay the same, right? If you're not rising the gra- if you're not raising the groundwater table, assuming all other factors stay the same, if you take weight off the landslide. You will increase the factor of safety.
Okay, thank you, and then the last question I had about those issues was the water table issue, um, I mean, it's no secret that we've been. In a horrible drought for a prolonged period of time, even, even with an inter- intermittent relief, it goes back a while. Um, is there any analysis done? That factors in the consequences of the drought to where the water table is now? As opposed to what it would be if we went back to a non-drought situation for five or ten years?
Well, really, the person that should answer that, the, the group that should answer that would be Yay and Associates, the landslide assessment district consultant. I can tell you, I went back and looked at the, where the current groundwater table is in that section. And looked at where the groundwater table was modeled. Back in, back when this, when the static stability analysis was done. And the high groundwater table with a factor of safety of one-point-three-seven was at elevation one-fifty-one. That's within the slide map, that's within the local slide. The, then they modeled the ground or elevation at elevation seventy. Where the water dropped actually below the slide that was modeled. And currently, the groundwater table is about forty feet below that, at about elevation thirty-five. Based on Yay and Associates' presentation of last year's assessment district.
Right, I, I, I get that, but ma- maybe you answered this, maybe you didn't, I'm not sure, but what I'm trying to understand is, if we. Don't have a drought going on the next decade, we go back to having rain again on a regular basis. How different would the water table be than it's been as a result of having been in a drought for many years? How reliable is, good?
It, it all depends on how well-maintained the de-watering facilities are, and whether they're increased or not. If you increase, if, if everything else remains the same. And you increase the rainfall and the input of water from rainfall, then you would expect the groundwater table. To rise, but as I said, that, that's just a general principle, okay, as I said, Yay and Associates are really the ones that. Have their finger, you know, they're the ones that know about the assessment district, they're your assessment district engineers, and they're the ones that should. You should, you would get a more direct answer from them, and they could tell you quantitatively, probably. Um, the answer to your question.
So, so, thank you, I'm gonna turn this back to, to, to Karen, but do we have the associates to answer that question?
Um, we, we don't, uh, but we have uh Rob DeBol here, maybe he can answer that question?
I probably was finding my mute, my mute button there, too. Uh, um, uh, yeah, I, I would want to have Yay and Associates here because they have the data, they have all the analysis. Um, I, I, it, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable hav- having them available to answer those questions.
Paul, you're here, Karen. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to go back to um. Lauren Doyle. If you don't mind, uh, I know you've covered this, uh, but I'd like to ask you again. This, are you there, Lauren?
Yeah, I am, sorry, am I unmuted?
Yeah, I, I just couldn't see you, so I wasn't sure.
Um, sorry, I'm trying to, oh, here we go, I, I had to go down to a different place for my video, sorry about that.
That's okay, uh. So, did you, did I hear you wrong, or did you not say that the seismic? Uh, the testing is not required for a single-family home, that's required for a development of four homes or more?
Wha- what I said was, the state seismic hazard mapping act. Is the requirement to do the state seismic, to do the seismic uh stability analysis in areas that are mapped. By the state as uh having potentially uh earthquake-induced landslides. The requirement to analyze that. In state law applies to subdivisions of, I think. I, I don't remember if it's four homes or greater, or greater than four homes, I can't remember exactly what the dividing line is there, but it, but. It's not applicable to single, single-family homes now. That doesn't mean that the city doesn't have stricter requirements, right, in accordance with guidelines. Uh, I was not the reviewing engineer, uh, you know, I was not doing the review, and, and our current guidelines, you know, went into effect in twenty thirteen. Right, this was reviewed in twenty-eleven, when it was approved initially in twenty-twelve, under. Our two-thousand-two guidelines, and I, and I can't recall, I couldn't give you chapter and verse what the difference was. You know, the difference, but, but I do know that the um way that uh seismic hazard analysis. Is conducted had changed in, in the profession during that time.
Okay, alright, thank you for clarifying that. Um, so, this is not a fire rebuild, but there was a house there.
A- and I did want to clarify, when I was speaking of fire rebuilds, I was talking about the previous fire rebuilds, m- all of the ones that had been reviewed and, and done. Up in Big Rock Mesa, right, not necessarily this one.
Sure, okay, thank you. Um, but there was a home there. That burned in a ninety-three fire. And I can totally understand how the neighbors have gotten used to having their views unobstructed for twenty-eight years. And. That's a nice thing to have. Um, there was a similar thing that came before the council some months ago on the highway. Uh, where also a home had not been there for, I don't know, a long time, I don't remember twenty, twenty-five years or something. Um, and I can understand, again, how people get used to that. But. I detect some hypocrisy here. With some of the neighbor comments. That it's okay for them to have their home, and it's okay for them to probably partially obstruct someone else's view. They've gotten so used to no home being here. They don't want to see a home go up. Even a home that's been designed to minimize the view obstructions. And it sounds to me, and from the staff report, it looks like a good faith effort has been made. So. I um. I also note. That it appears there's been unpermitted work up in that neighborhood. Which does put. The neighborhood at risk. And I, I, it sounds to me like some of the neighbors are asking for two sets of rules, one for themselves. And one for this applicant. And I really find that troubling. Uh, and I don't, I don't want to be a part of. Of, of setting up a system like that. So. Um, I'm ready to make a motion. I'm ready to move to approve this project based on the staff report and the resolution.
I'll s- I'll second that motion, Bruce, you want to discuss?
That, that's, to clarify, that's staff's recommendation.
Yes.
Yes, Paul. Um, so, you know, no, I, I didn't hear a single person opposed to this project make an argument based on view, and. You can speculate all you want about what their motives are.
I actually did, Bruce, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I did, and I can tell you who said it.
Okay. The argument that mis- that the appellant made, to best of my recollection, doesn't involve a view issue. It involves a safety issue. Um. But in any event, safety, we have to, we have to look at the question of safety, and i- it's, it's undisputed, as I hear it. That city law requires a seismic study for this project, undisputed. And it ha- and it hasn't been done. And I don't see how we can possibly, in good faith, approve a project. That we've been told indisputably violates our law. And a variance isn't being requested from the requirement to do that study, and I don't know that a variance even can be granted from the requirement. To do that study, and certainly the standard for such a variance hasn't been presented, and that variance hasn't been requested. Um. The unpermitted work, I, I, I heard there's actually unpermitted work on the property of the applicant that is currently subject to code enforcement. Um, and, and I kind of agree that before they get to build. Another project, they ought to be getting permission to build the thing that they've done already, whatever that is. But finally, and as I said before, and I haven't heard anyone else talk about this. Sequo requires an initial study at bare minimum, if there's unusual circumstances, I'm gonna just gloss over the cumulative effect. And this is as unusual as it gets. Um, it's on the edge of a bluff, it's digging into the edge of a bluff that overhangs. PCH in an active landslide, and, and I've heard nobody talk about the fact that Edie Michael says, not only active landslide. Generally, but active landslide specifically in the cul-de-sac and on this property. So, I don't get how we can in good conscience approve this. You know, it's nice to want to approve something. Um, it's nice to think, you know, hey, this is a good person, let him build his house, he's put a lot of time and effort into it, but there's law. And the law is the law, and we have to follow the law, so, that's my discussion.
Thank you, Bruce, Mikey, and then Steve?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, a few comments, um. Some of them go back here a little bit. Uh, respectfully, uh, Steve, when you, you commented. Residents asking for things and not getting them. I, what came to my mind is, our job here is to follow the code, so. Um, we often have residents ask for things that are outside the code, and that, that's why my questions are centered on, what's the laws? And uh, what's the code? Um, because if we went with what everyone wants, probably have a pretty chaotic city, I suspect. Um, and, and a discovery I certainly had on planning. I don't remember what the project was exactly, I was trying to remember, I almost think it was by Latigo, a project that. And everyone said it was a junk lot, you couldn't build on it because it was on an active slide. But along came a project with this big house. And with a recommendation for approval, I thought, well, how can that be, I've heard that no one's ever been able to develop up this because. It's on an active slide. And the an- and I knew what the answer was, and the answer was, well, if you spend enough money. With modern technology, you put caissons deep into the ground, you can build on almost anything now, and people are spending money. That no one's ever spent before, and I don't know how that factors in here, but I, I, it was an interesting lesson to me, because. Um, well, it caught me off guard at the time. And I just want to point out for everyone here that. In general permits, if you're permitted to build something. That's not the same thing as just you start and finish a house, it doesn't work that way at all. Getting a building, getting a permit's just the beginning. And often, once you get that permit, you have to continue to get more permits as you go, and more check-offs from building and safety. Et cetera. Um, for example, we've been dealing with that on wireless issues. That, yeah, the fire safety part. It's gonna be handled, or they won't be able to finish. Yes, in general, you get the permit to start, now you have to do this other set of things. And that's, that's a part of, ask anyone who's building a house. You're back to multiple agencies multiple times. So, realize that some projects get stuck in that, and it takes them forever. To finish, to comply with that, and I just wanted to make that as a general statement. Um. And then I'm gonna ask the question again. Because I don't know that. I feel I haven't got the answer, and it's a critical answer on my vote. Can somebody tell me? Does our city codes, our city law? Require a seismic study? To approve this project?
I'm gonna ask Mike Phipps to chime in here, because of all, of all of us, Mike is the one. That knows chapter and verse, but I can tell you, one of the things that resonated with me, Mikey, about what you just said. When I looked at this and I was reviewing for tonight, and, and reviewing the, the background material, sorry, I'll turn on my video so you don't feel like you're talking to a faceless person here. Um, was that, uh. Given the change, since we originally approved this in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, is that we probably would ask for. Uh, a seismic stability analysis. In part because even the current static stability analysis didn't account for the benefit. Of removing the weight of the soil, right, and didn't model the project as it is. Currently proposed, it was a, um, they just assumed that there would be a house weight, you know, on the hillside. Um, so, but that can always be done, uh, in, um. I- in the building plan check stage, right, a lot of times, people get hung up, and a lot of the engineering gets worked out. In the building plan check stage.
So that gets tricked, that gets triggered la- later?
Well, it gets tr- it doesn't, I mean, after planning, but it'd be the. First thing in, in, in building plan check, that would be the first thing. Anyway, Mike, are you there, can you chime in?
We can't find Mike Phipps in the meeting, is he maybe under a different Zoom name, or he may have.
I think he's with Chris, can you unmute Chris?
I'm, I'm here, uh, Lauren, uh, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, I think, uh. What's important to remember here is that, uh, the consultant, uh, Mark Barrett testified in the plan commission hearing. That because the static factor of safety for the local slope was so low, it was one-point-three-seven. Um, using very conservative, high groundwater conditions. Um, that, th- they knew that the seismic was gonna be below one-point-oh. And they didn't even run it, because they knew that, and they knew they were just going to have to request a variance, now the difference between. How we used to analyze things. Um, before the guideline change, uh, in twenty-thirteen, what we would do today is a displacement. what we would do today is a displacement analysis. Um, and Lauren, maybe you want to explain a little bit what that is. You know, and it is something that could be done in the building plant check stage and could be potentially mitigated through the design of the building, uh, to some degree. That, that's the difference, uh, between how this was reviewed originally and where we are today.
So a seismic displacement analysis, um, is one in which you have a slope. And if you run your static stability and your seismic stability and the factor of safety for seismic comes out to be 1.0 or less, then you flip over into a second phase, which is called a seismic displacement analysis. And this is all described in, uh, state adopted, uh, procedure, right? Which are referenced in our guidelines. And so what you do is you figure out what the yield acceleration is. In other words, how much ground shaking has to occur, a horizontal seismic coefficient that causes the factor of safety to be at one or below. And then you take that horizontal ground acceleration coefficient and the geometry of the slide and the strength. And you put that into, uh, you analyze that and it tells you, um, how much displacement is likely to occur. And the building code has, um, a threshold of five centimeters. If it's five centimeters or less of displacement, then that can, i- is allowed to be accommodated by the structural design of the foundation for the structure itself, right? Um, so 2.5 or sorry, five centimeters is two and a half inches. Is that right? Did I do that conversion right? Anyway, it's a couple of inches, right? If the displacement is greater than five centimeters, then there needs to be some mitigation separate from the structure. And that's how the seismic displacement works.
Is that something this body can or should require?
Well, if you're asking for, I, I, I mean, I guess. If you're, yeah, ju- jump in here because I mean, you're already asking for a variance for the factor of safety. So.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mikey, that was, that was our thought process back when we were reviewing it for the second time. The GeoConcept and Mark Barrett and his geotechnical group. You know, we knew the factors of safety for static were 1.37, 1.4. And if we ran the seismic analysis, we'd probably be at or below 1.0 at that time. Um, so we, we didn't have them do it, but we can certainly have them run it for the record to show what the seismic factor of safety is. But again, you know, we're applying for the variance and that was the thought process originally back in 2017 through 2019. But, uh, a simple answer, yes, we could have them run.
Okay. And then I will forever shut up after this next couple of minutes. Uh, I just want to read a couple of parts of the resolution here. So people understand that no one's just trying to willy nilly build a house. That's dangerous. This is C1 in the resolution. The site design and construction measures that will be implemented as part of the proposed project will produce a higher degree of site structural performance than the previous residence that burned because the previous residence was constructed prior to modern construction measures that improve site and structural stability. The increased evacuation, excavation, sorry, in the amended project has no effect on the safety and stability of the slope. Measures such as flexible coupling, swing joints for gas lines and coil loops for electrical cables inherently improve structural performance by limiting damage in the event of land movement because the joints and lines are less likely to break or rupture. Limiting damage and service interruption improves the safety of the site. So this will be one of the safer homes than here. But number two, city geotechnical staff reviewed the design as well as the geotechnical reports and determined that the documentation provided to the applicant supports the findings for the variance and that the project will not adversely affect the stability of the slo- of the slope. All the recommendations of the consulting, certified engineering geologist or geotechnical engineer and city geotechnical staff have been incorporated into the final design and construction plans and approvals, including foundations, grading, sewage disposal and drainage. Final plans were reviewed and approved by city geotechnical staff for, for compliance prior to the issuance of a grading permit. The property owner is also required to record the quality control maintenance manual against the title of the property prior to fin- final planning approval that will ensure the potential distress caused by land movement is monitored and addressed. Finally, city geotechnical staff has reviewed the extensive geologic supporting documentation for the proposed project and found it found as detailed in the conformance approval letter dated October 2nd of 2017, that the evidence provided to the applicant and his geotechnical consultant supports the variance findings. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve?
Yeah, I, and, and, and Mike, let me just go back to the comment you made. Uh, I, I was not, when I said, you know, residents keep coming back and asking and asking for it over and over again, I was not referring to these people talking about this one particular house. What I was talking to you, I've heard the people from Big Rock come up to the city council I don't know how many times and say, give us the tools we need and give us the help we need to make sure this place is safe. Uh, and they've been asking for that and asking for that. And I don't, right now, I don't see that displayed anywhere in here. I also hope that you're, you're, you're going to be, you're going to do what you just said. You said it's, it's a matter of following the code. And you're right. And the code says they were supposed to do a seismic analysis. That's what the code says. All right. Now, we can change, I mean, if you, if we want to change your code, we can have another meeting and do that. But if you're going to follow the code, that's what the code says. And I go back to the thing you just read us. The person building this house knows the land is, the land is moving. And he knows it's moving because he's putting in all these flexible joints in there to take care of the fact that when it moves, it doesn't rip his house apart. All right? So there is at least evidence on the part of the owner knowing that the land potentially is moving and it could cause him a problem. And I want to get back to the manual you just spoke about, the service manual. And just, you know, in terms of, here's what it says. Monitoring of the site will be performed by a servicer which can be a licensed professional, a licensed certified engineering geologist, or a licensed civil engineer, or a non-licensed professional, such as any prudent person skilled in this type of service. I mean, we've just got a whole, what we started with engineers and now I'm, I gotta find a prudent, who's going to decide who's prudent? How, how do you make that? I mean, you go a class to become prudent? How do you, I mean, nobody gets somebody who's prudent doing this thing correctly. I think our job is to make sure we're making decisions which protect the health and safety of our residents. And I don't think we've got information in the staff report that tells us that's what we're doing here. And I know we had information that says we have not followed our code and making this determination. Fall back to you.
Thank you, Steve. You see Karen's hand is still raised.
Um, thank you. Couple of things. Um, yes, I will go back to the, um, the neighbor, I believe it's a neighbor who spoke about, uh, views being blocked is Sabrina Zaretti. And that is why I take so many notes during meetings so I can refer back to them. Um, some of the neighbor statements appear to be given under the guise of a concern, concern for safety. When I think they are just as much about concern for their views, perhaps more so. And, and as Mikey read quite a bit of it, this is a 28-page resolution. The resolution alone is a long document. And, and, uh, you know, if, 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 uh, as Colin Drummond said, they're headed toward a new assessment district. Yeah, that's probably a good idea. This is not the first time Big Rock has been on our agenda. Um, and Steve, I do the, what, something you said raised a question in my mind. You said, this owner knows that the land is moving and is, is building, uh, the flexibility into the home. Could it be that the land is moving only under this parcel?
No.
Oh. Okay, so should the other homes be dismantled?
Karen, we're not talking about the other homes. We're talking about.
You know what? This is a hearing.
He's asking.
It's not a conversation.
He asked you a question.
I, I did allow you to make your comments.
He asked me a question.
I'm not asking you a question.
It sounds like a question. I apologize.
So again, we have a long resolution here and we have a builder who's asked, or potential builder, who's asking to do what everybody else in the neighborhood has done. Build their home. So I'll repeat my motion to, uh, to approve based on the staff report and based on the 28-page resolution.
I think you have a mo- your motion was made and I think it was seconded. So I was going to comment, but I'd like to call the question.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
I'd like to ask if we include a seismic displacement analysis in our motion.
Is that a request for a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'll accept that.
I'll accept that.
In that case, I'll vote, if that's true, I'll vote yes.
Before we, we vote on this, um, if we can just, um, I, I have the language that we can add if that's the case. I just want to make sure we have the correct language for the record.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So prior to the issuance of any grading or building permit, a seismic displacement analysis must be prepared to the satisfaction of city geotechnical staff.
And then again?
So prior to the issuance of any grading or building permit, a seismic displacement analysis must be prepared to the satisfaction of city geotechnical staff.
Same guys who didn't do the seismic study in the first place.
Well, it sounded like it might be happening anyhow, but I think we should, you know, for the, you know, Nick, concerns of the neighbors, make sure it does happen. I think that's how we handle that.
I'll accept that language.
I'll accept, I already accepted it once, so I'll accept it again.
But Steve, can we recall the, the, the vote now that we have an amended motion?
Yes. Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
And, and to clarify, this is staff's recommendation with the friendly amendment, um, as Adrian read it, correct?
Correct.
Ask a point of order?
Listening?
If, since the motion's been amended, do we have the opportunity to have some discussion or are we stuck with the call of the question for the unamended motion?
The, the motion's been amended. So it's been, it's, it's been that the, the prior motion no longer exists. It's now been amended to include the friendly amendment. So the prior motion is, is, is dead and now we have the amended motion.
So we can have discussion now a little bit.
Do you want to make a comment on it, Bruce?
I would like to make some comments.
All right. And I'd like to make a comment as well. So I'll go right after you.
You can go first.
Okay. I'd like people to think for a moment. I've, I've got, uh, the fact that I've been here a long time has some benefits and some hazards. Uh, I remember Big Rock before anybody was aware of the fact, who didn't live there, that, that there was a de-watering system. And I was here, although I wasn't aware of the fact, when somebody decided, when a group of homeowners decided to turn off the de-watering system because they didn't want to maintain it. Uh, when the landslide, when the water level rose in places to within less than 10 feet at the surface, all those millions and millions of pounds of water created a driving force and a lubricating force that, that caused the landslide to start moving. And several houses, many houses were damaged and a few were destroyed altogether. At the time, in my callow youth, I thought nothing will ever be done there again. To my surprise, uh, most of the houses that were damaged in the earthquake in the land movement, which while it was the differential movement is what killed houses. But nearly all of those houses were replaced within 10 years. And when the fire came along and took out, and I, I don't know how many houses it took out, but I think it was somewhere around 70. And now nearly all of those have been replaced. And in the meantime, I've got myself onto the Public Works Commission and examined with great interest the annual reports from the various consultants who monitored the de-watering wells. And over the years, I saw the water levels steadily falling. And when people are talking about movement that they're designating as a tenth of an inch and the same place would not move two years in a row, you start to feel like maybe it's just a little bit of settling, but it seems to be performing quite well. So de-watering works. Removing weight from the slide works. And that's why I intend to vote for this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Paul. So, yeah. First of all, it, it's, it's fairly obvious where we're headed. So there's just comments for the record, basically. This is not a fire rebuild. That's undeniable, even though people keep talking about fire rebuilds and there was a house here before and there was a fire. Uh, it's not the 2012 project, even though we keep being told this is what we approved before. And when we did it before, it was okay. Um, it's undisputed that our law requires a seismic study before this project can be put before this body for approval or it, when it's put before this body for approval, if it doesn't have it, it has to be denied. It's not an answer to say, we'll just condition a permit on complying with the law retroactively because we can approve every single permit that ever comes before us on that basis. Just what's the point of having hearings? Just from now on, anyone that wants to come do anything, just come apply. And you get a permit conditioned on you complying with everything you should have complied with before, no problem. And, and that happened with the telecom last week. But I think it was excused on the basis that we were in a gap period and that the prior law didn't require safety. Not because that's the way we're going to treat things going forward. Um, the staff has gone through contortions to authorize this project and it's indisputable. It's, it's, it's just inconceivable that they're not going to go through the same contortions to approve the seismic study that's ultimately done after the fact or the displacement study that's done after the fact. Because after going to all this trouble to get us where we are and be pushing us to approve, I can't believe that we possibly be denied going forward by the staff. The point of having these tests beforehand is so the public can look at them, the public can give us their, their views, we can give our considered analysis of them and then vote after we've had the proper studies that are required. Not we vote and then we leave it to the city to decide whether the studies that were required to be put before us have been done adequately. Um, in any event, we've been told repeatedly also, no problem because the city's indemnified. If we make a bad decision, the homeowner has indemnified us. Well, first of all, that, that indemnification is worthless if this landslide goes because they can't afford the damages. But let them, let them indemnify the neighbors. Let them get insurance. Let them put their, their money where their mouth is. Let's see if Lloyds of London is willing to insure this risk after they assess it. And if they think there's no risk and this improves the project, I'm sure they'll grant that insurance, but I'm also sure they won't. Long reports, long resolutions don't make right results. I can write much longer reports and much longer resolutions that will say that this is wrong. But I'm sure the length of that won't make a damn bit of difference. And then lastly, you know, there's, there's a saying in the playgrounds. There's, there's the, the saying in the playground, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. Words also don't make this project work. There are, there's, the, the sticks and stones are what we have to worry about here. The stones falling into the, into the highway, the stones bringing down the houses. Sticks and stones are what can hurt, words are irrelevant, so who cares what it says in the resolution? We can re- write all kinds of things in the resolution, I can make up all kinds of safety things and write it down. But the question for us isn't whether the resolution says it, the question for us is whether all the evidence persuades us that that's right. And lastly, I may have said lastly before, I apologize, lastly. Every single argument the staff makes and every time I read these reports, they don't say the right result is to do this, they say. An argument has been made and there's adequate information to support that argument. There's all, it, there, in litigation, there's almost never a situation where there's not adequate information to support both sides, the question is. Can, considering all the adequate information in both directions, who's right? The analysis here is always, the information is adequate to support this resolution, so let's appro- let's support it. That is not the proper standard, it ought to be overturned by a court in a heartbeat based on that standard because that's not the proper standard. We're not deciding by a preponderance of the evidence that this is the right thing to do, we're simply saying the evidence is sufficient to allow this to go forward. That's a court reviewing standard, not a city council approval standard. But again, it's pretty obvious where the vote's going, so that's just for the record. And I'm sure there'll be an appeal to somebody, so there it is.
Thank you, Bruce. Steve?
Uh. Yeah, I, I, I agree with pretty much everything Bruce just said, you know, the size of the resolution doesn't mean buckets, I mean, doesn't have. But. What Bruce did bring up is the same topic that we heard about under the. Uh. Cell towers last week, transparency. I mean, having this test done prior to voting on the stuff. Gives the residents the comfort that we're being transparent about whatever's going on and they have a chance to look at it, they have a chance to comment on it, they have a chance to check it out. When you do this stuff after the fact, alright, it, it reinforces this thing, this. Belief that there's all sorts of nefarious things going on in the city, people will c- can approve, whatever the hell that you get approved. And the residents really have no ability to find out what's going on, so I just think doing this seismic test after the fact. Reinforces this lack of transparency issue that's been haunting the city council for some time now. I'm done, Paul.
Thank you. Where are we in the vote, Kelsey? Are we starting a new vote?
Start that vote over if you're ready to vote on the amended motion.
Please.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
No.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
No.
Motion carries.
Hey, that takes us to four B.
Mayor, it's eleven thirty now.
Yeah. How do you like my motion from the beginning of the day?
No. Is there, was there one?
I think I want to second it right now.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think it's getting late, it's gonna, this, these next items are not quick. And I, I know people probably waited, but you know, we're not gonna do it just, no good decisions are made after midnight, we know that.
So it sounds like there's a motion and a second to, to continue those items to the next city council meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, with apologies to people that waited.
Okay. Kelsey, will you take the roll?
And we're continuing items four B, four C, and four D to October twenty-fifth.
Yeah, was there one pass?
We had a five A, five A too.
Why would you five that?
Let me grab five A.
Wasn't that an easy one?
It's the consideration of the resumption of in-person meetings.
Five, five A looks like we can handle it, would be my guess.
It shouldn't take more than an hour.
My staff reports only thirty minutes. Thirty seconds.
Five A's a ten minute most, at most. So the motion, the motion is to um, continue four B, four C, and four D to the next city council meeting.
Right.
And Mayor Grisanti, a representative from Verizon has raised their hand.
Sure. You recognize them, please, Kevin?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protim and members of the council. Um. Uh, Daisy from Verizon earlier, um, discussed. Uh, having these three appeal items on Verizon's telecom projects. Um, continued to the next. Uh, regular meeting of the council, which I think is on December, I'm sorry, October twenty-fifth. Um, Verizon would also like those three items. Uh, agendized as the first public hearing items so that we can be sure that they actually are heard uh, on that regular meeting day.
I'll take that as a. We can accommodate that request.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And we appreciate your cooperation.
Are you ready for that roll call?
We are.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I believe we're gonna do item five A now. And consider resumption of in-person meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll try to keep my comments brief. Um, I think everyone who's been tracking the COVID pandemic, uh, is seeing that we're starting to see some improvement, particularly in LA County. Uh, the new case rates are coming down, the total hospitalization numbers are coming down. And the number of new daily cases are coming down. Uh, so there's some, some good news, of course, we've seen good news before in this pandemic. Uh, however, with that, we're also seeing continuing, although slowly going up, the vaccination rates. Are continuing to rise, albeit rather slowly, but right now in LA County, about seventy percent of all. Eligible, eligible county residents aged twelve or older are now fully vaccinated. Um. The quick background, uh, earlier tonight, the city council did adopt a resolution that made the findings, uh. That will allow you to continue to, uh, meet virtually. Um, our recommendation is that we continue to do that until we've seen either some significant. Um, reductions in the, uh. The numbers that are coming from LA County, but, but by that I would say actually where we get to the point where we start seeing. Uh, the county health starting to pull back on some of the regulations. Whether that be masking or, or the social distancing. So my recommendation at this point would be that we, uh, continue to meet virtually. Uh, and that we come back, I would say, come back in a month. Uh, of course, I would ask that if, if for some reason situations change and. Things start to look dramatically, dramatically better, we could always come back earlier than that, but that would be my recommendation that we continue to meet virtually. And that we take this up again at the November ninth city council.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Grisanti, I just want a note for anyone watching at home that you don't have any public speakers for this item.
Thank you very much, Kelsey. I see Bruce's hand, I see Karen's hand.
I was gonna, I was gonna move to adjourn, but go ahead, Karen.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion to, uh, to go with, uh. With Steve McClary's, uh, recommendation that we revisit this in a month, I, I will state for the record, uh, that I know of a family. In our city, uh, four members of one household. Uh, recently tested positive, so COVID is not gone. And the events I've attended recently have only been because. Proof of vaccination or a recent negative test was required to enter the event. So I think, um, we need to continue to be cautious.
Oh, I'll second.
Yeah, my, my, my motion is to just, uh, stay in a holding pattern here.
Yeah, I'll second the motion, I thought this was just informational and we already made the findings earlier to support under the Brown Act. Allowing the continued use of the soap, but if, if you want to have a formal motion to do, to support Steve's recommendation, I'll second it.
And we got a motion?
I'd like a, just a quick comment that, uh. As I thought I had COVID a couple of days ago because I felt like Helen had like half the symptoms. It is very quick and easy to go get a test in Malibu, so don't be shy, people, if you don't feel well like I did. Um, go get a test, turned out, well, I have no idea what I had, but, um, here I am.
You, you had a tie-in withdrawal.
That's likely.
You can buy the tests over the counter, s- stock up one in the home and take them whenever you're comfortable, feel like you need it.
Great. Uh, Kelsey, do, would you like to take the roll?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin? Councilmember Yurin, you're muted.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now let's return to Bruce's motion to adjourn, I'll second that. Can we, can we, uh, have a roll call on that?
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night's sleep.
Thank you, speakers, thank you, staff, for all your work. Good night.
Good night, night.